If I could have your attention, please. I'd like to welcome you to our City Council meeting this October the 10th, 2019. In the interest of time efficiency and ensuring that everyone who wishes to address the council is given the opportunity to do so, the following will apply to all comments made by the public. If you desire to be recognized by the chair, please fill out a request form and present it to the city clerk present in the council chambers. Each speaker shall be allotted three minutes to address the council unless such time is extended by the mayor or by questions from council. Groups shall designate a spokesperson to avoid repetition of comments. Every effort will be made to avoid interrupting speakers. Thank you for participating in your city government. Please silence all electronic devices. With that, I call this meeting to order, and we'll begin with our invocation. Could we all please stand as Pastor Delbert Rogers from Champion Baptist Church comes to lead us in our invocation.
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we do thank you tonight for the occasion. We pray tonight that you will bless each one of the folks that come to conduct the business of our city. Father, we pray you'll give our councilmen and our mayor that you will give them wisdom, help them to do things in your will and your way. And Father, tonight, we thank you most of all for our Savior, the Lord Jesus Christ, for we pray in his name and for his sake. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Rogers. Could we please remain standing as we share our pledge allegiance together? Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May we be seated. Mayor Clark, will you please call the rolls?
Mayor Blackwell?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Here.
Councilmember Cooper?
I am here.
Councilmember Askew?
Here.
Councilmember Trace?
Here.
First, we have a proclamation and recognition of National Domestic Violence Awareness Month to Tammy Douglas. Are you here? If you'll please come up and join me. And anyone you would like to bring with you, Tammy. Whereas Help Now is a certified domestic violence center that has provided services for survivors of domestic violence in Osceola County for the past 36 years. Whereas 24 acts of domestic violence occur every 60 seconds in the United States, and in 2018, Florida reported more than 104,914 incidents of domestic violence, of which 1,863 occurred in Osceola County, and 196 murders statewide. And whereas the problem of domestic violence is not confined to any group or groups of people, but crosses all economic, racial, gender, educational, religious, and societal barriers, and is sustained by societal indifference. And whereas we encourage domestic violence survivors and their families to seek assistance from appropriate victims of domestic violence services and the City of St. Cloud Police Department. And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing domestic violence and to show support for the numerous organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy services and assistance to victims. And whereas the efforts of Help Now of Osceola and the Osceola County Domestic Violence Task Force and its supporting community member organizations in combating domestic violence is dearly recognized, and whereas the City of St. Cloud is committed to restoring the right to freedom from fear in our home and freedom from fear in our community. Now therefore, I Nathan Blackwell, Mayor of St. Cloud, do hereby proclaim October 2019 as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And we call upon the citizens of our community to join us in working towards the elimination of personal and institutional violence against all persons. Would you like to say something?
City councilmen and women and members of the community, we really appreciate being here this evening and you recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We do share this month with an amazing other cause, Breast Cancer Awareness Month, both very important issues near and dear to us as women specifically. But during this month, and all year long actually, Help Now works really hard in the community, and we know that this issue affects each one of us in very different yet personal ways. And we have to come together to work together to support survivors and in this violence. So we really appreciate us coming together. And I just really, really, really want to take this opportunity to commend the City of St. Cloud and the city council members for all of the support that they provide to Help Now over the years. And certainly, more recently, we have an annual event here in the city where our council members have been very graciously supporting us by putting on heels and walking through downtown here to do a Walk in Her Shoes event, just to kind of be able to illustrate their leadership for this cause. So we appreciate this recognition. We have an event almost every day of the month this month, so we invite you to visit our website or our Facebook page and take a look at the events that we have. We do have a conference that is for the community that is coming up at Heritage Park. I'm sorry, it's at Osceola Regional Hospital this year on October 18th. That is open to the community to learn more about domestic violence and how we can come together to provide support for survivors. So thank you very, very much again for all of the support.
Mayor, if I could, also, we're turning the lights purple down on the lakefront for half the month and half the month pink. And I wore my purple tie tonight. I would just certainly like to add that I don't know of an organization that is doing more to serve our community better, meeting a greater need than Help Now does. There's certainly a lot of things going, but they do an amazing job. And having worn heels a couple times, I certainly have great appreciation for all you women who wear those things. Thank you so much for what you guys do. This time, I have a proclamation and recognition of Pink Heels to Lisa Thompson and Darla Craig. Could you join me? Whereas The Pink Heels Cares Enough to Wear Pink is a national nonprofit organization consisting of firefighters, police officers, and leaders in the community whose sole purpose is raising awareness in the fight against cancer. And whereas in September 2016, The Pink Heels Cares Enough to Wear Pink started a chapter in St. Cloud encouraging public safety professionals, local leaders, and citizens throughout the community to wear pink in honor of all women and to join forces to help them in their fight against cancer. And whereas the spirit of this campaign is to fight for those who have lost the ability to fight for themselves by asking for public support and raising understanding and awareness to all citizens. And whereas by keeping the proceeds in your community, you can help to provide love, hope, and support to your neighbor or community, nonprofit groups supporting all types of cancer. And whereas anything is possible when virtuous people devote themselves to a cause that does so much good and benefits so many. And whereas The Pink Heels Cares Enough to Wear Pink campaign honors all women and recognizes the need to come together as a collective group and help with the fight against cancer, reminding future generations that people who are not affected by an illness can come together for those who are. And now therefore, I Nathan Blackwell, Mayor of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, do hereby proclaim October the 1st through October the 31st, 2019, Cares Enough to Wear Pink Day, and encourage our citizens to remain committed to supporting the fight against cancer. Would either of you like to share something?
Saturday, October 12th, we're having a big Pinktoberfest event downtown St. Cloud, actually right out here in Centennial Park. We're going to have a truck pull. We have several teams this year, lots of vendors. Like so far, we have, I think, 37 vendors signed up. So it'll be a fun day, stuff for the kids to do, and all the money that's raised will stay here in St. Cloud, and we always keep everything local. But we appreciate all the community. We have got so much support. The support from the city is unbelievable, and we're just spreading out. We're having people from all over calling, wanting us to come help them, or can we come there, you know? So it's really booming. So we appreciate everybody's support.
So come out. We only got one more day. We need you to come out into Centennial Park and be with us. St. Cloud, I've been here for most of my life and working for St. Cloud, and so has Darla. And we followed each other around the whole time. And when we seen the vision for this chapter, to have it here in St. Cloud, is because we seen the need and the people that we share each and every day with that are fighting cancer, and they needed a support system. And if we can do just a little, that makes a big difference. So we want you to reach out and be a family with us, our firefighters, if you see them, they're all in pink this month. We have a beautiful pink truck, a pink engine. It's on 900 Minnesota Avenue, if you'd like to look at it or sign it in memory of someone who is fighting cancer. Come on out. We'd love to have you, love you to show you the truck. So please come out and know that everything that we collect stays local, and we do home visits, and we love you guys, and thank you for loving us. Thank you.
At this time, we have a presentation of Employee of the Month by Bob Dethridge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. The week of July 22nd through the 26th, 2019, was one of the busiest the Building Department has ever experienced, with over 200 inspections scheduled every day, for a total of 1,098 inspections for that week. During this record-breaking week, there were only three inspectors available, as there were two with scheduled vacations, and one was out on sick leave. The three inspectors during this week performed over 50 inspections a person each day. Their dedication and devotion allowed our contractors and customers to keep their projects on schedule. We wanted to recognize James Laurent, Todd Hastings, and Daniel Bowman for the dedication that they demonstrated, and we nominate them for Employee of the Month for August 2019. Congratulations, James, Todd, and Daniel, for being selected Employee of the Month.
Going back to work.
Not so fast.
He's got inspections to do. The next part of our agenda is the Citizens Forum. Any person who desires to comment on any item not in this agenda is provided this opportunity to address the city council. Each person is requested to complete a signing form to be provided to the presiding officer prior to as soon as is practical thereafter the person addresses the council. Please, as you come forward, state your name and address for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Deborah Gingrich, 6730 Owens Road, St. Cloud, 34773. A remembrance to the leach aid quarter. At the last meeting, you indicated that you hired two attorneys from Orlando. As of this date, do you have an update from them? And have you hired an environmentalist since the last meeting? Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to address that?
There's no change in the current circumstances, and there's no update. The attorneys are completing their review, and they are working with environmental experts. The situation remains exactly the same as the last time we discussed it. The city is not accepting any leach aid through waste connections into the city system at this point, so we have no further update at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Menzaren.
Thank you.
Good evening, Laura Tweed, 2808 Mead Avenue, St. Cloud, health and human rights advocate. I want to say thank you, first of all, before we get started, for putting the trees on 192. It's beautifying our areas, and I want to say thank you. It's a big, important improvement. The question that I have currently regarding the landfill, currently, the City of St. Cloud residents are being charged $54 a ton. JED is only charging the B O C C $2 a ton to dump in there. It's a little unjustified. Don't we agree?
Yes.
So that's about all I wanted to bring up there. And you've already answered, there's no updates regarding the attorneys or any type of information regarding Bob Bauchak or Aaron Brockovich at this moment, or we're not that far yet, is that so?
Can you talk to me okay?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Anything else?
No, sir, that's it.
No, we don't have any additional update, updates on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hewett Crumpler?
Appreciate the opportunity to speak to the council. My phone number's 407-906-8826. For any citizens that want to talk to me about any city business, I'm always welcome the interaction. And I just want to ask, which I frequently do, the council members, to act in the best interest of all the citizens of St. Cloud when making decisions. I'd like to ask that you be transparent and forthcoming with information. Sometimes we feel like we have to pull it out, and I appreciate a little more forthcomingness and more transparency. I hope that tonight you will support the petition to keep out-of-state coal ash from being entered into Florida. I feel confident that you will, I hope you will. And I want to say that, I know I sound like a broken record bill, and I apologize for that, but I'd like to know what the update is on the ADA project. For many, many months, we were told it was going to be done, then we were told a few weeks ago that suddenly the vendor can't do it, and we can't be compliant with the ADA project fully. I think, you know, I know you don't want me to keep asking this question, but I feel compelled that we should have a completion date, a new estimated completion date, and whatever additional costs are going to be to get it done properly. And I feel very bad that the vendor kept saying it was going to be done, and it wasn't done. And maybe we didn't write the request for proposal properly, but they ought to be held accountable when they say they're going to do something if they're suddenly not going to do it. And I hope that you will listen to everybody with an open mind. I know we all have our hot buttons, our agendas, but people that come up here are doing their best to get the citizens represented and to get the council to do what's best for all of us, and I really would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crumpler. We don't have any additional update on the ADA project. That changed from the last time. Would anyone else like to speak to the city council during the Citizens Forum? If not, then we'll move to our consent agenda. The next portion of tonight's meeting is the consent agenda, which contains items that have been determined to be routine and non-controversial. If anyone in the audience wishes to address a particular item on the consent agenda, now is the opportunity for you to do so. Additionally, if staff or members of the city council wish to speak on a consent item, they will have the same opportunity. Would you like to speak on the consent agenda, Ms. Crumpler? You'll state your name and address again.
Good evening, Hewett Crumpler, Michigan Avenue, St. Cloud, Florida. Regarding the consent agenda, I'm hoping there's some other people that will have some questions, but here's my questions. And when I ask a question, I expect to get an answer to tell me that you don't have an update on the ADA. That's not acceptable to me. I want to know when you're going to have an update.
Mr. Mayor, you're talking about the consent agenda at this point.
I'm talking about common courtesy. Regarding the consent agenda, I want to know what number item A is. It's impossible to read that and to figure out anything about it. And if something's being changed, I'd like to know what it's being changed from and to. On item number B, I'd like to know what it's about. And, can't read my own writing. Again, if there's a new agreement, what's the mayor agreeing to? It says it's giving the mayor the ability to agree to something. I'd like to know what that is, what the terms are, and what's being changed, and if there's going to be a cost. What was the old system? What is the new system or terms of the agreement, whatever the agreement's about. On C, I'd like to know what water wells are being tested. This is referring water testing. I'd like to know what chemicals are being tested. And I'd like to know if this chemical testing process is described in C with this particular vendor, if there have been any changes or additions to the chemicals based on all the conversations you all have had about the coal ash situation. Is it standard operating procedure? And it looks like you've got the same company doing the testing. So I really am concerned about that, and would like to know the answer to that. On number D, you said you're spending $298,000 for a skateboard park refurbishing. And that's probably not a bad idea, but in light of the fact that we want to spend hopefully about $6 million for the Hastings Farm under the Parks Project, and that is an unexpected item. I think you need to reprioritize what your priorities are for parks, because we can't afford everything, and that's an awful lot of money just for refurbishing a skateboard park. Number E, it says, what does that say? New services? I have to read my own writing. Oh, it's about a consultant, and I'm asking, why do we have a middleman? Does this have to do with insurance? It seems like it says no cost, because our provider, our insurance carrier's going to carry that cost, but we could probably save money by not having that middleman. And then, what's the last thing say? What does it say?
How much is the existing multi-year agreement? Is that number F you're talking about?
How much is the existing what?
Multi-year agreement.
Yes, you have a multi-year agreement in F. I like to, because it says no cost to the revision. But how much is that agreement? How many years is it for? And those are my questions. I really would appreciate a direct answer on all of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sturgeon?
Sure.
Do you want to walk down that list?
I will.
And speak to the ones you feel you need to.
Item A, it's in the agenda packet, 219-206R. It gives all the current parks and rec rates. It's in the agenda packet.
So you're changing something?
Yes, it's in the agenda packet.
If it's in the agenda packet, I'd be fine.
Did you have the shell, or you got the entire packet?
I don't know.
Mayor, excuse me, I'm out of work.
Yeah, you need to talk. What we're doing is they're changing the hourly rate that they're paying the employees because they've been underpaid. And in order to be competitive with what other recreational facilities that cities and the county are paying, they're upping the hourly rate from $15 to $20, I believe I'm correct on that.
No, this is regarding...
You said number A?
A, this is regarding fees.
Okay.
For pool fees. Correct.
You want me to just read the fees?
Absolutely. I was going...
So the current resident fee for schools out fund day camp is $25.
Right.
It is remaining, the proposed fee would remain the same, and I guess the current non-resident fee is being said. Maybe, is Stephanie here? Why don't you come?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Because I'm following this.
Excuse me. This is what they're charging people to be able to use the pool, both the residents and non-residents.
So it looks like the only changes have to do with the spring break camp?
Good evening, Stephanie Holcamp, Parks and Recreation Director. Yes, that is correct. There's three camp fees changing. Spring break camp is going up $10. Summer camp is going up $10, that's per week. Our specialty camps that we offer are going from 60 to 110. All these costs have increased, like the mayor says, to be competitive with the surrounding government agencies, Kissimmee, Osceola County. And then also, we finished the cost-benefit analysis for the 2009 camp programs, and to keep our same level of service and offer the same amenities during these programs, an increase was needed.
Thank you. Item number B?
This is the, if I may, Mayor.
Please, sir.
This is an interalical agreement between the city and the Stevens Plantation Community Development District, and it's before you for approval of that agreement, which is why it has the language in it that the mayor would execute the interalical agreement. This is a very common practice throughout the city. There are certain subdivisions that actually have entranceways that are in the public right-of-way that the subdivision will maintain, because the subdivision wants to have flowers and signage and those and theirs. So what this agreement does is it deals with the existing entranceways into the subdivisions that make up Stevens Plantation. They are actually in the public right-of-way. So for this community development district to be able to maintain those entranceways at their expense, at no expense to the city, they need an agreement with the city to give them authorization to do that. That's what this does. So that's the interalical agreement.
Dan, could I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Real quick. Why didn't we do that much sooner? I mean, right now? I mean, right now, I mean, the city's been paying for upkeep and keeping that.
No, they haven't. The city's never maintained these areas.
So it's just, it just-
It just was, it-
Nobody did it?
Well, they, the Community Development District maintained them all this time through their thing, and no char, and the city didn't do that. We were approached by the attorney for the community, for the homeowners association, I believe, or the Community Development District over there, who said, "We'd like to have an agreement in place so that we can address it."
Okay, so we didn't, we didn't need to catch that at the time when 15 years ago, we should have caught that, or?
I mean, probably could have been, could have been caught, but I don't, it just wasn't. But again, the city, the city hasn't, the original plan associated with Stevens Plantation had these subdivisions designed, and as part of it, each of the, each of the, what we call the pods at that point, each of the pods was given the opportunity to develop their own entranceway. They wanted to do it with the understanding and the agreements with them that they would maintain it. So there was an agreement in place back then that said they would always maintain it.
Just didn't have it in writing? Okay.
No, it was, it's part of the original agreements with each of the developers of the pot.
Each development, okay.
Do you have any other questions?
No, sir. Thank you.
Item Number C?
Mr. Felblinger, can you address that?
This is about the testing. Kevin Felblinger, Intro Public Works Director. The testing, we basically have, it's required by our permit to be able to stay in compliance with our closed cap permit. We are doing monitoring for the gas wells quarterly and the groundwater semi-annually. Like I said, this is required for us to be able to stay in compliance with our permit for the landfill.
Thank you.
Item D is a skateboard park, and again, that was budgeted in last year's budget. It was assigned a project number. The Consent Agenda before you is up to $300,000 for the design build, and they're going to do interactive sessions with the public and skateboard enthusiasts to come up with a final conceptual master plan for that skate park, and then do, do the build right after that.
Do you want to give an update on the Hastings issue?
Right now, we're doing appraisals on it, and we've made no direction from council to purchase that property.
Item Number E, Y consultant?
Yes, Item E, we're required by state statute to have a agent of record to be self-insured. We're required to have that under state law.
And then, Item F?
That is just an assignment of a, it's up to a 30,000-year, a $30,000 contract, and it's a company that helps us if we have a road collapse, they can come in and shore that up and put some aggregate or something like that, so we don't have to shut down the road while they repair it. And all this contract is, is changing, they change company names, and it's just assigning it to the new company name.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to the Consent Agenda? You state your name and address.
My name's Ariel Hartney, 199 East Cedarwood Circle in Kissimmee. I wanted some more info on C, as to the parameters being tested for it. I understand it's part of the permit, but I wanted to know, is that like BTEX compounds, you know, chlorinated? What are we testing for? And then for Item F, I wanted to know what the filler material is that that company uses. Are there any coal combustion residuals used as, like a recycled material as part of the aggregate? That's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Matheny, or you want to speak?
Yeah, whenever it's our turn.
Okay, all right. Is this something that pertains to-
It's up to the council, where the council needs more information on this. Mr. Felblinger, I'm sure can answer them.
Mr. Felblinger, do you have any additional information?
Certainly, if we not, we can get that information. Again, we hire these professional consultants to do the required testing and the performance, and they comply with professional standards when they, when they address it with regard to the testing or with regard to the materials that they're using.
Right.
Kevin Felblinger, Public Services, Public Works Director, pardon, sorry. I said, I don't have all the parameters for what they're testing for right now. I'll be glad to provide it. I just, I don't have those in my head. I apologize. And then, like I said, and I can get more information about, about what is used with the uretech. I don't have the cut sheets for those right now.
Thank you. If you have further questions, you can see him after the council meeting, and he'll be glad to address your concerns. Item Number F, the question you raised there, this is an irrelevant issue. We, we're just changing titles to who they do. I don't think you could address what they do and what they don't, and what they provide. Would anyone else like to speak to Consent Agenda? If not, we'll turn to our council. Councilmember Cooper.
I'd like to talk about A and D. Back, back at the swimming pool again.
Councilmember Matheny?
I'd like to pull B as in boy, and D as in dog, for discussion.
And I guess the question is, the-
Mr. Cooper?
Thank you. The, my question is, the $10 that you're going to be charging, you mentioned there was two of them?
Yes, spring break camp and summer camp.
Are you telling me that we, the city needs, we're desolate, we need that $10, we're not gonna, we're not gonna keep the swimming pool open? I mean, people, hang on a second. You've got kids here, and their mothers and daddies, and they're working hard. And probably, when they do things to go for the kids on the weekends and holidays, and when they do spring break and all, money is kind of tight, I think. And $10 is a lot of money to some people that live on it. So if we don't need it, are we not making money in this budget for the water, for the swimming pool? What kind of money, at the end of the year, how much money you got there, how much you spent? Could you tell me that?
Well, Mr. Cooper, I think there might be a misunderstanding. This isn't for the swimming pool, for summer camp-
Okay.
And spring break camp.
Oh, for the breaks, for going up-
Yeah, for childcare.
Okay. But the swimming pool, tell me, are we raising some of those rates, do we are?
No, sir.
I think, Mr. Cooper, part of the confusion is, the way the council, the way we, the council has done this historically is, all the fees are being, are adopted by resolution for the various services that the city provides. In this particular instance-
You're putting it all in one?
It's always maintained all in one. So the only thing that's changing is those three items that Mrs. Hol-
You never tell, you never tell the citizens exactly so they can understand what it is. I mean, some of the council members, we read it, we sit through the staff meeting and get every information we can do, and we sit down and pull through our PCs and look. But somewhat, we're just missing some of this boat, and we're not getting it written plainly enough where the citizens can read it, they understand what it is. Just little snippets that you need to put in there that you're not putting it in. And Sturgeon, Bill, I've asked you many, many times, can we do that? I appreciate it. We can. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Cooper?
No, sir.
What was the other item you wanted to speak to?
Was D.
Why don't we go to D then?
The, going back to the skateboard park, are we a little bit ahead with the money before we're getting the drawings and what it's going to be? Bill, is that what we're doing?
No, we're actually doing a conceptual plan. There's three proposed conceptual plans. We're going to do public input sessions, and like I said, to skateboard enthusiasts, and then allow them to help design the park. So to contract with this company, that's what we're doing. We're going to allocate that money, so that once they find out what that concept plan is, we can do what they call design-build, and we can, you know, speed up the process of building the park.
Okay, or we, who came up with the $298,000? Is it conceptual? The staff did that?
Yeah, we had a company do that and give us an estimate of what they thought that that size park would cost, and that's why they came up with that estimate. And that was in last year's budget, and it was given a project number. It was brought forward to this year, so we didn't get to start the project. The money was carried forward from last year.
Okay. And this is the only, this is the only bid that we've got that came out of?
No, we, we-
No, we had, we received three bids.
Three bids. This is the best one of the three?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So the other two were much higher, which you're telling me?
None.
This is a design-build process. So the current plan would be to have the, this entity, which is deemed to be the qualified respondent to this, for this project, will then do the design, do the public meetings and the citizen input that Mr. Sturgeon was talking about, and then there will be an established price, a guaranteed maximum price, based on the design work.
So this $298,000 is just, is buying this guy right now? It could be much less.
No, sir. That's the budgetary amount, or the-
Budget amount, okay.
That the consultant, as I had already provided, I understand it provided previously. That's where it comes from. So the council, the current plan, the current plan would be for the, after the review of all this, it would come back in front of the City Council, where the City Council will approve the, leave the final contract price, or the-
We're going to see drawings and everything?
I, it depends what the council would like to see as a whole on this project. Depends how involved you want to be on this project. Yes, sir.
I'd like to see at least the drawings and what it's going to be for almost $300,000, if I could see that.
Well, my packet had some conceptual drawings in it.
Okay, you just missed it, then.
Just the concept.
Right. Yeah, just the beginning. Okay.
Are you through?
Yep, that's done. Thank you.
Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. So I'll do D first, since Ms. Holcamp is standing up here, if that's okay, Mayor.
You can go right ahead.
I personally was excited to see the skateboard park. I think it's a great asset to the community. I know there's a lot of kids that like to use the skateboard park, and if you have not been to the current skateboard park, there's a lot to be desired. I'll just leave it at that. One of the things I wanted to talk about with council is maybe adding, and I can make a motion with this change to it, but I would like to see that we add a 10% contingency to the project, because I don't want the city manager to have to come back, and, you know, that's a pretty standard cost of doing a project. You know, we're not going to be able to get through this without some unforeseen popping up, and I'd like the city manager to have authority to sign any contingencies up to 10% of the project.
It's about $30,000.
So you, are you-
But we don't have the number yet.
Is your motion to authorize that the city, to give the city manager authority to approve the final price based on the current budget amount plus 10%?
Yeah, well, I had a conversation with the city manager, who said completely different things than what you just said, as far as like how the process was going to be, so-
I may have been wrong and correct, I apologize for that, but my understanding, you know, particular design-build is when it comes back after, and for final approval of the guaranteed maximum price on the design-build contract.
So if we're going to do it that way, then why aren't we just approving the design cost?
Well-
Instead of $298,000.
There you go.
Well, you're, because you're, you're not, because the way the process works is that you get a, you have conceptual plans right now, which are part of your packet.
There was three, though.
Right. And the, from those, would, they would, they would do the design, they would do the ultimate construction plans, which would allow them to give their, put together the pricing that would get to the final construction cost for the project. And that would be the amount that would be, hopefully, less than $300,000.
So there was a budget in the packet that contained no contingency.
That's correct.
So that's my concern, is that there's no contingency to the project. So, I don't know, this process seems odd to me. Like, it seems like you would either approve the design budget, and then they would bring back plans, and then we would approve the budget.
True.
You can do, you could, you can do it that way, too.
So I don't know what the other council members are thinking. I don't know what the design amount, I don't have it pulled up right here, what the design amount was in that packet.
Well, if they come back with a budget, then you can add a contingency to it then.
Yeah, but this is not for them to come back with the budget. They, there's going to be design effort to have to come back with plans. So it seems like you should just approve the design budget, and then have them come back with the plans with the budget, seems to me. I don't know how the other council members feel about it. Does it have, I mean, it had estimates in the packet, but I'm with Mr. Cooper, there was three different designs. I talked to the city manager about it, because I thought it was confusing, which one of the designs are we getting?
Yeah.
And then the cost estimate had all kinds of contingencies in it, so it wasn't, didn't really feel like, when you read the top of the cost estimate, there was a lot of contingencies in it. So I would prefer just to approve the design budget.
Okay, and that was about $15,000 in the planning and design development?
So are you making a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda item, but only approve up to the $15,000 design budget.
One second, we need to-
Mr. Manzares, make sure we have this correct.
Yeah, we understand that at this point, the City Council would like to move forward with the design phase, and then we'll bring back, once the design phase is completed, then we'll bring back the ultimate construction cost based on the design, based on the plans prepared.
I got that.
All right.
Thank you.
Do I have a, I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Any other discussion, council? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Member Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Do you also want to talk about B?
Yes, please. I just wanted to clarify, the cover sheet for the agenda item said that they could not enlarge it. The interlocal agreement on the third where S says they can enlarge it. So I did speak with the attorney about that, and it looks like that's maybe an error on the cover sheet of the agenda.
Right, and, and the way the actual agreement reads it, they, it does provide that there is an enlargement, and this is that subdivision area that we were talking about, the areas of entranceways, the subdivision. However, they'd have to come back to the city for approval to do anything, any sort of enlargement, so.
So my concern reading the agenda was just, I didn't want there to be free rein to put whatever they wanted or enlarge it, and then there's 180-day cancellation for either parties, and then walk away, and then we're stuck maintaining something more elaborate or larger than we had initially anticipated. But the ILA has language in it that they have to get approval through the right-of-way process. So I think we're covered on that respect. And I also know, like, the landscaping has had some history out there in Stevens Plantation with visibility issues and site triangles and things like that, so I was concerned if there wasn't going to be some kind of checks and balances. So I just wanted to clarify that it looks like the cover sheet of the agenda saying that they couldn't enlarge it wasn't accurate.
Yeah, and just two points on that, Councilwoman Matheny. The, the existing landscape in these particular areas is what gets to stay without being changed, without any future permitting. If they want to change it, they want to put bigger landscaping in, that impacts the visibility triangles, they got to come back for a right-of-way utilization permit. The agreement also has language in it that says, "If the agreement terminates for any reason, whether the city decides they want it terminated, or the CDD decides they want it terminated, the city has the right to tell them, 'You have to take everything out, because we're not going to maintain it.'"
Great.
So they basically would have to make those areas barren if the city wanted to do it at the time.
Okay.
Mr. Cooper, you have anything?
No, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Matheny?
That's it.
Do we have any other discussion? Got a motion that we approve our Consent Agenda, with the exception of Item D. It's already been approved.
So moved.
Second.
Have council, have a motion from Councilmember Matheny, a second from Councilmember Cooper, a second. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?[1724.87]
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
The next portion of tonight's meeting are public hearings. Number one, Madam Clerk, would you please read that?
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2019-24. An ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, amending Article Two definitions, Article Three, Division Twenty-Eight, exterior lighting standards of the land development code, providing for severability, conflicts, codification, effective date.
Good evening, Andre Anderson, planning and zoning director. This is the second and final public hearing for the exterior lighting standards. This has come before you, uh, before you before and it's related to exterior lighting requirements for all commercial buildings except in areas of agriculture, single-family, duplexes, and any situation exempt from the local ordinance of the Florida statutes. At our last meeting, you had asked for a couple items to be looked at and we took it back and met with, um, residents that had some concerns and we added the LED requirements in the, in the ordinance. We also removed the amortization requirement that said that you had to comply within six years to now be, um, the standard amortization or standard non-conforming requirement that basically if you, um, the exterior lighting is damaged more than 50% of the value, then you have to comply with the new code, so that could occur at any time. Within a year, or five years, 10 years, or 15, 20, whatever number, period of time, rather than require the six-year amortization. We also addressed the issue that you had with respect to restricting the height and specifying the height as a requirement for, for lighting and instead base it primarily on the photometric plan. And we also, um, included specifications regarding the color rendering index, the CRI, again, with respect to how intense the light would be for the, um, area that it, that the exterior lighting would light up. Other than that, it's as you had seen it previously, so it's consistent with, with our growth management strategic goal and we ask the city council approval of this item.
Would anyone in the audience like to address this item? If not, council, what is your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion for Councilmember Matheny, a second for Councilmember Cooper, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Item number two?
Mary, if you have both items read at the same time.
Could you please also read item number three?
Thank you.
First public hearing and introduction for ordinance number 2019-40. An ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation of private institutional to approximately 1.32 acres identified as Muslim center of St. Cloud, located at 3720 Fifth Street, providing for amending the official future land use map of the comprehensive plan filing the planning commission's recommendations and proof of publication, applicability and effect, severability copies on file and effective date. First public hearing and introduction for ordinance number 2019-41. An ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a zoning district of professional compatible with public-private institutional future land use designation change adopted by ordinance number 2019-40 for approximately 1.32 acres identified as a Muslim center of St. Cloud, located at 3720 Fifth Street, providing for entering the designation of the official zoning map filing the planning commission's recommendations and proof of publication, severability and effective date.
Again, Andre Anderson, planning and zoning director. The first item is a comprehensive plan amendment for a Muslim center which, um, and the companion item would be the rezoning of this property. It, this item, um, was before you previously and previously it had received a conditional use approval for a place of worship in an R1 zone. And the approval occurred in January of 2018 and there is a requirement for, to have development within a year. They weren't able to achieve that and requested an extension which the city council also approved through resolution, um, 2019-042R in, um, February of 2019 and that six-month extension expired. So the applicant has now submitted an application for a future land use change from residential to private institutional and the companion zoning would be professional to allow for this Muslim center. It is compatible with the uses around it. Again, the current land use is low-density residential and as I said, it is compatible and there are no adverse impacts to the city facilities at this time. It's consistent with our strategic goal for growth management and the DRC heard this item in their August meeting, 2019, and recommended approval and the planning commission at their meeting also recommended approval of ordinance 2019-40 which would approve this future land use change. Again, this is the first reading. The zoning, again, as I said, is a companion item to this, um, um, future land use request and the existing zoning is R1, single-family, and the proposed zoning would be professional with a floor area ratio of maximum of .6. Again, it's compatible with the surrounding areas, there is already existing professional uses, um, north and south of this property. The DRC at their meeting recommended approval of ordinance 2019-41. The planning commission at their meeting also recommended approval and as the city council did the same. The applicant has also already submitted their proposed site plan for this project, which is currently under review by staff. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them and the applicant is here.
Is the applicant here, I believe Mr. Mohammed has requested to speak, is that correct?
Yes.
Please come. State your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Honorable Members, chamber, Wajid Mohammed, Kissimmee, Florida, 34744.
Do you have anything you'd like to say or add?
Well, I listened to the gentleman presenting the conditional use. We were here before and we had met your approval. We also sat with the different boards, the, the works department, the structure, sewer, water, and we met their, their guidelines and he rightfully said, we have submitted all the architectural plans, um, for, for the city's approval. So we're requesting, you know, the, the good chamber, like you did before, to vote in favor so that we could continue the progress and building of the Muslim community center.
That all?
That's all. I have any, if you have any questions, you know, I'm here to answer.
Why don't you just stick around just a minute, okay? Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Please state your name and address.
Good evening, Hewett Crumpler, Michigan Avenue, St. Cloud, Florida, I have a couple of questions. I recall when this was brought up before, I recall when the provisional approval was made and as I remember, there were some concerns about parking and, um, parking sp, spaces and also, uh, whether or not the parking was gonna be paved or left as grass, as I recall. My question is, it's residential now, as I understand it, and you're trying to change it to, what's it called?
Industrial.
Prove, professional?
Professional.
I really don't know what that means and I guess I would question, my question is, other churches in the community, are they in residential areas or professional area? What, what is the des, typical designation for churches, um, or places of worship that we have in the area? I mean, like Nathan's Church, I don't know what you're-
I'm surrounded by residential, thank you.
So you're in a residential-
Absolutely.
Uh, zone. So I'm not really sure why we need to change the zone from residential because to me, when we, when we make these changes, there should be a compelling reason to change it and maybe you have one, I, I can't see it. But also, I'm a little concerned that, um, it's been a year and a half and nothing's been done and the provisional, like, was not a problem with provisional approval. But to come back with a zone change, which has long-term implications for, if they sell this property to somebody else or whatever, I, I think we need to understand that more fully. And personally, I would like to see the design before you approve the zone change in particular. That was just a suggestion, I'm not for or against, I'm just raising some questions that I have based on that. I, I just, every time we make a change in, um, zoning, an exception, we've got a lot of exceptions. There ought to be a real, real good reason and, and I'm not sure that we can live with the long-term consequences all the time. Thank you.
Andre, would you like to speak to that?
Yes.
Parking and zoning.
Yes, so the property is within a sea of professional. You see, the yellow on the map represents the parcel that's in question and everything to the north and to the south of this property is professional. The future land use shows the same thing. The property that's outlined in black, that's a light-colored yellow, that is low-density and everything else around it is private institutional. So it is compatible with the change and that's why staff supports the change. Regarding the parking, the applicant is required to comply with their parking requirements at the time that they submit their site plan, which is currently under review.
Thank you. Thank you, would anyone else in the audience like to speak to this item? Not, Councilmember Cooper?
Andre?
Yes.
So are you telling me it's gonna be, the parking is gonna be grass or it's gonna be?
I'm not telling you anything at this time, Mr. Cooper, I'm-
What is it required?
Saying it's under review right now.
What would be, what would be required?
I don't know until the, the DRC has completed their review. If they submit a request for grass parking, it's something that the DRC can consider and if it's a deviation from our code, then the council has the opportunity to approve that.
Okay, are, are we down, are we, are we just looking to kick the can down the road a little further so that the Muslim can wait longer, not necessarily a year or six months? Now they can take two, five, 10, 20 years before they can do whatever they want to do, whenever they want to do?
Unfortunately, I can't respond to that. That would be a question for the applicant.
Well, I guess the question was asking, I was asking you, can, can they do that? You're telling me yes or no?
I'm not telling you either because-
You don't know?
If you allow me to finish.
Yes, sir.
Okay, this is private property and we, as a government, are able to, um, accept applications for rezoning and requests and we review it and provide the applicant with our best recommendation, which we're doing now. The applicant has the opportunity to develop their property when they feel. We are not required or we are not able to tell them they have to develop tomorrow. With respect to the conditional use, the difference there was that that had a specific condition because it was a use that was permitted, but the board had the opportunity to impose conditions and those conditions would expire after a year and that's what occurred. Then they asked for an extension, which for six months, which again expired and so now they, rather than deal with a situation that had a timeframe or a time limit, they are now requesting a land use change and a zoning change which is compatible and consistent with the surrounding area. So if they get this land use change and zoning change, they can develop their property tomorrow or they can develop it five years from now, that is their decision, not the, not staff's decision. Whether the council wants to make some imposition, I don't know if that's legal or not, that, yeah, that's the city attorney that question.
I see the applicant would like to speak again, would you like to?
Honorable, Mr. Cooper, to answer your questions, we are not using the application that filed for any strategy to further delay the progress of the building of the mosque or the community. Like the gentleman rightfully said, the purpose of it, why we did it like this is because we were financially strapped. We're a small community that's growing and as advised by the engineer, uh, we decide to do the architectural plan, the site plan and submit to the city. With respect to what you're talking about, we sat with the infrastructure department and several models of parking were given to us. One of the parking that was hinted to us was parking on grass, in which we'd never considered that because it will entail using a pond in the front. There were other grids that were given to us that is still on the table. But we are certainly, the infrastructure that we have in mind and put in there would be something that would be in compliance with the city and the safety of the public and to our members. I, I could assure you that. In terms of the strategy or, or whatever you might have, the terminology used, to further kick the can down the road, we, if we get the blessings of the city council, we are thinking about breaking grounds as early as December. We currently rent a place in the back of Walmart and we pay an exorbitant amount of rent for there. So we figure if we get your blessings and we meet the approval of the city, we will start breaking there, that is why all the plans are submitted and we're hoping that the city expedited in a timely fashion so that we could start the project.
Well, my, my question back to you was, we gave you the first year and we gave you another six months, you know, and-
That's why, that's why, I, I mean, if, if we, if we go step by step, that's why I said to you, financially we were strapped, we're a small community.
But you took our ti, you took this council's time, you know, and, and, and the ci, and the city, the staff, for a year and another six months and you, you brought something to them and back and forth and you didn't do anything for a year and a half. Now you're, to me, it looks like you're changing the, you're changing, like I said, to kick the can down the road further to as long as it can go, whenever it can go and your money is whenever it gets to where you can do it. I understand what you're trying to do and it's just, you know, if you were gonna do it or you couldn't do it, you should have said right off the bat.
Well, to be quite honest with you, you know, when we, when we got into the project, uh, you know, we are first timers. We knew nothing about building and whatnot, we, we, we had to go upon the advice of, uh, architectural engineers. At the place there, at the grounds, we had to get the infrastructure to bring in sewer. It's a septic tank, it is not permissible within city guidelines. That takes a little while. To, to get all the, the plans and all the infrastructure going with, with the different departments, it took time. It took time and then to get all the city approval as we go along, it took time. It's nothing that could have just happened, one, two, three. And then we had to get soil tests done, we didn't know of all these things and it cost money. $20,000 to do the four pillars of, of soil tests. But thank God we have overcome that hurdle and we're ready to move on. We're ready to move on and I guarantee you, sir, that we are not gonna bill in five years. If we meet your approval and you, you give us your blessings tonight, we're gonna break the ground come late December, uh, uh, no, late November or early December. No more kicking of the cans.
Councilmember Cooper, you have anything else? Councilmember Trace?
So I, I, I think this is a compatible use, it's pretty much surrounded by property owned by the Catholic Church and it's the same land use, same zoning. Um, I'm, I'm sure staff will ensure that you guys meet the LDC and all the design requirements with parking and everything else. This probably should have just been a, a zoning change in the first place instead of a conditional use, but, you know, that's kind of the, the pass, but, um, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 2019-40.
Second. We have a motion for Councilmember Trace?
I guess I'll undo my button.
All right, thank you. A second for Councilmember Askew that we approve item number two, ordinance number 219-40.
And just for clarification, this is your first, this is just first public hearing and introduction?
Thank you.
So you're not actually approving the item?
And if you get plan review in two months approved, like, that's, yeah, you, you have, uh, Lord's blessing on your side.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, and Mr. Cooper, I'm gonna invite you to the grand opening. I'm gonna give you a shout, you're gonna stand with us. You're gonna stand with us.
When you start to dig, I'll be there.
You're gonna stand with us.
I'll be there in November or December.
You got it, I'm gonna bring you, thank you.
This, this November or December, right?
This November. We got it, yeah, okay, thanks.
Again, it hasn't been approved yet.
Yeah, yeah.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Reluctantly, aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Enthusiastically, aye.
Council, motion carried five zero.
What is the pleasure of the council regarding ordinance number 219-41? Could I have any further discussion or a motion? I make a motion that we approve, uh, ordinance number 219-41, could I have a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Askew, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Cooper?
Reluctantly, okay.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Unreluctantly, yes.
I'm gonna be there in November now.
Motion carried five zero.
Congratulations.
Well, again, that's not-
We'll see you, we'll see you in a few weeks.
Well, hang on.
End of, end of November, I'm gonna be everywhere.
Just, everybody, this item will be on the, this item will be on the agenda for the final adoption. This was only introduction, it's not approved yet.
Yes, sir, we understand. You're gonna, you're gonna leave us, I mean, we got more exciting stuff to do here, guys.
They run off now, I run them off.
Congratulations.
Go and get their plans approved.
Could you, Madam Clerk, could you please write, uh, item number four, please?
First public hearing transmitted for ordinance number 2019-43. An ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, repealing and replacing potable water element of the comprehensive plan, providing for following of the planning commission's recommendations, proof of publication, applicability and effect, severability copies on file and effective date.
Good afternoon, or good evening, I'm Cameron Crandall, deputy director of environmental utilities. This is for the repeal and replacement of the potable water element in the comprehensive plan. The council, city council saw this back in July, uh, they voted to approve the- They voted to approve the, the transmittal of the comprehen, potable element of the comprehensive plan. When we sent it to the state for review, South Florida Water Management District had some comments on our comprehensive plan, so we added those into the, the goals, objectives and policies of the plan itself. There, they were asking us to taking, take into consideration their regional water supply master plan when we're doing our master plans, so we added that into the policy.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Please sit up. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Laura Tweed, twenty-eight oh eight Mead Avenue, St. Cloud, health and human rights advocate. I'd like to know a little bit more in layman's terms what this actual agenda here is about, this agenda item. I'd like to know more about it before I know exactly what questions to ask. I live in a subdivision that does not have potable water connected and I'd like to know if this has anything to do with that.
Do you live in the city? In the jurisdictional limits of the city?
I don't, but there's some.
Then, well, for you personally, it doesn't have any impact on you.
So can you tell me more about this agenda item?
Cameron?
So the potable water element of the comprehensive plan, it kind of outlines the city's goals, policies and objectives when it comes to potable water inside the city. The first objective is to plan and ensure that the city and its utility boundary area has enough potable water of high water quality to meet its current needs and its future needs. And the second objective, or the second, second goal is to make sure that we provide proper fire flows for fire safety throughout the city's utility boundary area. And the, the policies underneath those goals and objectives speak to master planning, making sure we're using the right numbers when we're calculating the, the usage of the homes and, and commercial and also make sure that we're establishing a capital improvement plan to improve our facilities for future needs.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? Please state your name and address for the record.
Hewett Crumpler, Michigan Avenue, St. Cloud, Florida. I'm just confused about what is different than the plan that we saw previously and was, was submitted? And you said something about...
South Florida Water Management District.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Keith. South Florida Water Management. What was, that they wanted us to do that we had not done in the previous submittal? I'm interested in knowing that and another question I have is, if this is about, one of the, one of the objectives is about having enough water, how is enough water defined and what is the timing on having enough water? And what happens if we don't have enough water? Are these just goals that have no teeth to them or, or what is this exactly? Thank you so much.
Mr. Cameron?
Just trying to find, okay, so the specific request of the South Florida Water Management District was policy PW one point two point seven. It just talks with, the South Florida Water Management District comes out with the regional water master plan. The most recent one was in 2015. And so it's asking that every five years, when South Florida Water Management District comes up with a new water supply facilities work plan that we, within eighteen months of approval of it, that we incorporate in our regional water supply plan. And as far as what is the needs of the city, we have a water master plan where we look at population growths. The last time we did this was in 2017. We are planning on doing one this coming year. We look at population growth. We establish estimated usage of, it's called a S, ERU, so homes and, and commercials. We, we take these numbers and we also look at actual numbers. We know exactly how much water we're pulling out of the ground and how we're, how much we're putting into the distribution system. So between the estimate and the actual numbers, we come up with our projections and the city currently has nine point seven million gallons per day of potable water. And so we know when we might need more of that and we're obviously planning to get more water when we need it.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? We have discussion and our motion by council. Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you. Quick question. This potable water, looks like, didn't we do this about a month ago? Now we're doing it again?
The city council approved it back in July, yes, sir.
And we're redoing it again?
Uh, we're, yes, so you're, so we're bringing it forward to repeal and replace.
Repealing what, replacing what? Why, what happened a month or two ago? Did we get the wrong one? We sent the wrong one? We didn't send it? We, now we're sending the right one or what are we doing?
Yes, sir. So the version that was sent to the state for review did not have the comments from South Florida Water Management District. We've incorporated those into this potable water element and that's what we're bringing forward to you today.
Okay, so we're just, we just missed to put a lot of language that we needed to have in there?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Manzera?
And I was just gonna point out to you, so from a process perspective, the way, way it works, agencies get the comment on like South, South Florida, because it's a text amendment to the comprehensive plan, it has to be sent to the state to look at and the state does it, the problem was the comments that were provided by the South Florida Water Management District weren't sent to the state. So when the state reviewed the text amendment, they did not have those comments. So in the abundance of caution, we probably could have moved forward with it, but we didn't want at some point down the road, having the state come back and say, you, you have your comp plan element related to this particular, the potable water element is inconsistent with the, with the state law on it. So we're bringing it back and basically to make sure that those comments are incorporated. And remember, this was part of the, there were what, one, two, three, four, five separate elements that were previously contained in one element and we went through, the staff went through the painstaking task of breaking down individual elements so that if we had to make changes in the future, we wouldn't have to change the massive element and we could do it each on an individual basis. So that's why you've probably heard this, you've probably seen this, this action, it seems like multiple times at this point.
Mr. Cooper, Councilmember Cooper?
I just have a little bit of, a little bit of confidence problem that we did something a month ago and now we're redoing it again and adding stuff that we didn't get. Or either you just had it done and just slipped the wrong one? Is that what happened? I mean, I'm trying to find out what happened.
Yes, sir.
Did you just miss not putting the right language that you needed to have and you added to it now? Or you just got the wrong piece of paper?
I believe the wrong version was submitted to the state and the wrong version was brought to the city council.
Okay, that's, that's my, my confidence problem of, of level. Look a little closer the next time. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. And I believe we...
And we'll have the problem that I did this time, so I appreciate that, so.
And we have taken steps to make sure that this happened.
And you told me that, what happened, so I appreciate that too. So thank you, sir.
Councilmember Trace?
Motion approved, ordinance number twenty nineteen forty-three.
Second.
We have a motion to approve from Councilmember Trace, second by Councilmember Matheny.
Mr. Mayor, could I interrupt? Also, the motion needs include transmittal.
Oh, sorry, and transmittal to DEO.
Second.
Thank you. Motion to approve and transmittal included. Motion by Councilmember Trace, second by Councilmember Matheny. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Brings us to item number five.
Public hearing for resolution number two thousand nineteen dash one ninety-two R. A resolution of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, making a determination of parking spaces required for single-family dwelling located south of Seventeenth Street, east of Delaware Ave, Ave, west of Eastern Avenue, St. Cloud, Florida, further described in the body of this resolution.
Good evening, Andre Anderson, planning zone director. This is a parking determination for the Dover Village project. It's for thirty-two townhomes. They received approval for the preliminary subdivision plan previously. The current, the future land use is low density, zoning is R three, proposed was thirty-two units. Proposed two and three bedroom units. As I said, the PSP was approved by the city council back in December of 2018. The current requirement is for four parking spaces per dwelling unit plus two in the garage, two in the driveway, plus one for every two dwelling units, which is basically four point five parking spaces per unit. The proposed requirement that the applicant is requesting is for three parking spaces per dwelling unit, one in the garage and two in the driveway, plus nine additional spaces, thing for a total of hundred and five parking spaces. It is consistent with our strategic goals for growth management and staff recommends approval of resolution two thousand nineteen one ninety-two R for the parking determination to allow for less than required parking for this project.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Mr. Stengel?
Good evening, Sean Hindle, Hanson Water and Associates, represent the applicant. We're in agreement with staff recommendation and planning commission recommendation. They will answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Councilmember Trey, Mr. Crumpler, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Hewett Crumpler, Michigan Avenue, St. Cloud, Florida. Andre, the original plan with the four and a half, was that times thirty-two units? Is that the way it was? How many spaces does that equate to versus how many we're asking for now with the difference?
Mayor, is that a question?
Yeah, that's a question. It's a question because, and my other question is, when you give me the difference, it's a huge difference. And secondly, I would like to know if the fire chief has had an ability to review this and, and what his opinion is of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Speak to that.
Certainly. So the plan was previously brought forth as a PSP to the, to the city council. We specifically discussed parking at that meeting and it was approved with the three spaces per unit at that meeting, a four one vote. When we submitted our construction plans, we had already had our construction plans submitted and we already addressed all our comments and then we were asked, would we consider showing that four and a half spaces would work on the site? And we can put four and a half, but it really makes it a sea of, of brick pavers, concrete and it doesn't provide what the applicant wanted to present as the development. And he, he develops these all over the, the central Florida, including four developments here in, in the city of St. Cloud that he's completed and he just wants to right park them. It was reviewed by the fire chief or the fire department through the DRC process. We did make a no parking on the cul-de-sac to make sure that the end cul-de-sac of the development, that he could make a turnaround. There is only parking on one side of the street if, if anyone parks on the street and there's also off-street parking for visitors and a minimum of three spaces on each slot. Every single home is being submitted for permit for four spaces per lot, has one space as an optional. And then the HOA will monitor the parking and if anyone needs additional parking, all the parking is be done with brick pavers and they'll expand the brick pavers and add the additional space on that lot. So we, we've accommodated the, the whole concept of, of going through this process is because in the code, there's several discrepancies on how multifamily and townhomes are, are affected, especially in section, in R three zoning. And just to clarify, to make sure that there's no, no confusion on what is actually in the parking code and what's a townhouse required, we've, we've opted to follow staff recommendation and submit this request.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We have discussion and a motion by council. Councilmember Trace?
Sean, do you have a, a copy of the site plan?
Yes, sir.
Okay, perfect. I just, I, I don't have a copy of the old one that we approved a while back. Yeah, if you can. And then I just wanna, just like Ms. Crumpler brought up before about some stuff of, let's just fix the code with, with regards to parking on attached, you know, product like this. And, you know, I think apartments is two parking spaces per unit, single family is four plus a half. I think townhomes, if we kind of meet in the middle of three with each unit and then like a half, guest spot like we have for a, a single family, just where it's, one, not a sea of parking and two, we have enough parking for guest, guest accommodations, so. But on this, you know, I guess where, where were you providing the guest parking?
At the end of the cul-de-sac, there's three parking spaces. There was four, but staff asked us to make one of them handicap, so we took one of them out and made them three spaces.
But do you think you'd be able to fit sixteen guest spaces on the, on the plan?
We're showing right now twelve, because we don't want to have people parking on both sides of the roads. We're signing one side of the road, no parking. If you go into Town Center, it's done the same way in Town Center. Any area that's not designated for parking has no parking signs. We evaluated that to want to snow constructions, developments. All those units, there's forty-six units there. They're all larger than these units. And we've actually contracted thirty of the thirty-two units and we don't have, we originally had one family, but they've pulled out, so we don't have any families. They're all retirees or, or elderly as, as being, the homes are being sold to right now. So when I was in the office the other day with Nick, there were three firemen from New York and all three of them each bought a unit and retiring down here with their wives. So we have, I have nine, or twelve guest spaces. I have the ability to put four spaces on any lot. We're, we'd like to start with three unless a, one of the people wanted additional space and then the HOA will control it, just like they do at the other developments. So if anyone needs additional spaces, they'll have them to put them in.
Thanks, Sean. Any, any questions? Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. I'm, I'm not sure where's twelve spaces coming from, because my agenda says a total of nine additional spaces located on street.
I'm sorry. There's six on street and three off-street. It may be nine, one, two, three, four, five. There's six on-street spaces parking and three off-street, so it's nine additional.
Okay.
For guests, if needed.
So when you say that there's gonna be a single car garage and there'll be one, one in the garage and two in the driveway, how wide is the driveway?
Sixteen feet.
So they're gonna be side by side in the driveway?
Yes, ma'am. That's per your code.
So, I mean, my, my personal feeling is like, whenever you go into these neighborhoods, I know, you know, snow construction does a, a great job and everything, but there's just cars everywhere and you can't get down the street. The trash guy can't get down the street, you know, the, you know, ambulances. I always think like, gosh, I hope nobody has an emergency because they can't get down the street because people do park on both sides. I mean, I don't know how realistic it is to retro parking spaces onto properties. I know it's a sea of parking, but it's better to be able to have the garbage trucks and the ambulances get down the street. That's just my feeling. We've all driven into neighborhoods and subdivisions and, I mean, I know it says, I live in a neighborhood with townhomes, right? And so with the single car garage, that kind of doesn't get used because the first person home parks in the garage and then the second person home blocks them and then they can't, you know, there's like a car jockeying situation. So then people end up parking on the street, so, I mean. I'm not sure if, the history I got of the approvals was maybe staff messed up when it came before, council before. I don't know if Andre wants to give kind of the history of what happened with that. I mean, I, I just was like, how did we approve this and, and so I, you know, trying to go into the history of it.
PS, we specifically discussed it here in the council chambers and there was one lone dissiding vote and that was you, Ms. Matheny. But we discussed that there would be three parking spaces on these units and there was a comment, you were commenting that you felt these are single family and should be four and a half, where everything under three point, under R three puts townhouses with multifamily, not with single family. So then in your parking code, you have, you don't mention townhomes, but you have single family detached and attached and you call these single family attached, which if you go to other planning documents, they don't call townhouses single family attached. They're row houses or multifamily units. So then you have different people, well, if you go to city of Kissimmee, they have townhouses specifically listed and they list them with the same parking requirements as multifamily. If you go to the county, the county calls townhouses single family attached, just like the city of St. Cloud does. So we did discuss this. If you look at the parking plan, there's one space directly aligned with the garage. There's one space completely separate of the garage and there's an option of a third space completely separate of the garage. So that creates four spaces. We'd like to have the optional one, not required upfront with the building of the house. We'd like to have the optional one not required upfront with the building of the house unless someone requests it as, as the buyer of the home, or if the homeowner association deems that that needs to be put in because of their parking. So, we're not having everything blocked. You have one car behind the garage, just like you do at any other garage. So, if you have a two-car garage and you have two spaces, you have two spaces blocking the garage. So, it's the same width as a two-car garage, which would be 16-foot width on driveway, and then we add an additional eight feet if they need a third car garage, a third car space. We did a lot of research in the city of St. Cloud. I did a lot of, of research on different parking studies throughout the United States, Oregon, Washington State, Alexandria, Virginia, which is where the best studies were. And we followed those studies, and that's what we used to create the, the document that we provided to you. Under Town Center, which is a similar product that they built, just larger units at Town Center, there's an average of 46 to 76 spaces every time I went there that are empty. And I can't tell you how many people are not parked in the garage or parked in the garage, because most of the doors are closed. But that same development, the same product, the same market, the same builder has 46 spaces, and they don't have a single car outside of a park, a designated parking space in Town Center. So, you have the same developer, the same builder, same HOA originally that provided there, and the same enforcement, and the site works fine. So, we would like to just right park the development based on our experience, and as long as we right park it and we control and we have an option, if the right parking does not work, of how to correct that. If they need more, we'd just like you to consider that and, and maintain what our previous approval was, which was three spaces per unit.
Matheny?
Thank you. Mr. Ranzaris, how would that actually work? Like, let's say this gets built, and it's a year down the road, and there's a bunch of complaints about parking. I mean, the scenario of making people add parking spaces, I mean, does that, I just know whenever, I just know whenever I've dealt with HOAs, it's kind of like, they don't really have all the teeth that they, if anybody challenges it, they don't really have the teeth. Like, if they're like, I'm not building it, it seems like the documents don't ever really force anybody to do anything.
Well, it's not practical. It's really, it's possible, but obviously, it's not practical down the road to try to add parking spaces on private property. The issues that typically come up in this situation is the enforcement of the no parking signs to address that, and that becomes a, basically, these are public streets, so that becomes a law enforcement issue. And, so, I'm not, I'm not sure what, what your question is, but in the future, there's, the, the parking issue is not, the city does not have a lot of control over it. Basically, the subdivision would end up, or the development would end up governing itself, and it would likely have an impact on the, on the people that live there. And they could show up in front of you and complain about it, but there wouldn't be much the city council could do at that point.
Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you. The 16-foot wide for your two-car park there in front? No way you're going to, you're going to be parking outside of the 16-foot, and your cars are eight-foot wide or more, some of them are more. You're going to be out there parking in the grass on each side. I just feel like the four and a half is better, better suited. It's, you're, you're asking to say, well, down the road, let's go ahead and we'll, we'll build some more parking facilities later. I don't think I want to do that. I don't trust that it's going to get done or would be done. You don't need to get up there.
Okay.
My, my thoughts, what I'm saying is, you, you, that's okay. I just, I feel like four and a half's better than two and a half or three. Thank you, sir.
Would you like to speak to that?
You know, I came to St. Cloud in 1980s, and when I moved here, it's always been known to me as a city beautiful. And for me, city beautiful is not a sea of parking that's not going to be used. You go to my neighborhood, we don't have a single car that's parked on the road. We have an HOA that enforces that, and we notify people when they're parked on the road, they can't do that. I don't know why there's any consideration that this HOA can do the same thing. Every single permit would be permitted with four on, onsite parking spaces. We're just leaving one as an option, because we would rather have more landscaping, more beauty, than additional brick pavers. Some people think brick pavers are pretty. I like them myself, but, again, the developer would like the opportunity to have more green space than pavement that potentially will not be used, or most likely, in his opinion, will not be used. He's built these, he's researched them throughout the state, he's built them all over the state, and he builds product in this community that people always reference of that's a snow house, or that's a snow development or snow property, and they're proud of it. My neighborhood is a snow, snow development, and I'm very proud of it. So, he does things right, and he does things well, and he's right here in our city, and he's just trying to say, I want to do something nice in our development in our city, and we want to do it and park it right. So, I just designed on Neo City Academy, and the whole idea of Neo City Academy is we were going to right-fit everything. So, we came to a net-zero energy building, and we were able to right-fit the, the air-conditioned systems and the infrastructure to make sure that the energy uses were just what was needed for that building. That's the same process or concept that Nick has here. He would like to make sure that he right-fits it. When he built Town Center for y'all, and everyone, even your own staff, references Town Center and how well they love it, and it looks so great, and it works so well, and that's three spaces per unit. These units are two-bedroom and three-bedroom, about half and half, and they're 1,400 square feet, where Town Center is 1,700 to 2,200 square foot units. These are built to accommodate an elderly clientele, because they, the biggest issue had at Sanctuary, at Battalion, at Town Center, is the elderly don't like the two-story units. So, he's making one-story townhouses. Everything's commonly maintained, just like in a multifamily, so there's no, nobody maintains their own yard. Everyone has a common maintenance, just like a multifamily development. The only thing in here that's different is the number of parking spaces. And he's doing the same number of parking spaces here that he did, actually has more here per unit than he does at Town Center, and Town Center has 46, at the best, 46 empty spaces every night. And he's just trying to say, even at, that's at three spaces per unit. So, if they had four at 46 units, they'd have almost 100 empty spaces every night instead of having landscaping. He'd rather have the landscaping. That's all we're asking.
Your landscaping is cheaper by, by far than your putting the bricks is going to be or your concrete.
I disagree, sir, because landscaping you maintain, bricks you don't. So, your landscaping, you have a maintenance cost every single day, every single week, where your bricks, you pay for it one time. So, for them to put the landscaping, the bushes, the trees, the grass, is a cost that they have to continue to maintain, and they have a continued cost. If there's less of it, that cost is less. He wants it to look good.
Councilmember Trace?
So, so my worry, I, I agree, Mr. Snow builds a good housing product. My worry is, once we set the precedent of allowing some of these variances, then anyone else can. It doesn't matter who it is or what it is.
No, I agree.
So, I'm, I'm not a fan of the three-car-wide driveway in a, in a dense configuration like this. I mean, that just looks like a used car lot if every single house has that, so I'm, I'm definitely not a fan of that. The on-street parking, I mean, it's, if code allows it, then that's, it is what it is, but we need to make sure that a fire truck can get down and back. I, if we go less than three and a half spaces on this, or three plus, you know, one per every two units, the only way I'd be fine with that is if we had square footage and/or bedroom count limitations on this, where it can, because we, we approved this variance, and then you could build a 3,000-square-foot townhome on that, or probably 2,800-square-foot townhome on that same lot, and then you have families in there who can have an issue. So, if we limit it to that square, whatever square footage, the 1,400 square feet and a three-bedroom max.
Mister, we have, we have no issue with that. So, the project is already designed, is completely designed. All the units are completed, sold, and they've contracted all but two units to date, and they're all going to be this size, two-bedroom and three-bedroom. So, about half of them are two-bedroom, half of them are three-bedroom. We have no problem with you limiting our, the square footage of our buildings. We understand that, and we'd be, we'd be fine with that limitation.
Okay. So, I just brought that idea, see if anyone else kind of agreed.
Councilman Raskin?
So, Sean, I don't see, what's the width of your road you're going to be building on here?
They're, they're code 22 feet wide.
22 with two footers.
Actually, they're 24. We designed these ones 24 feet wide.
Okay. So, you got Miami curbs in there or something?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, I, I, I guess I disagree a little bit. I think you are going to run into a parking problem. I mean, I really haven't seen where we have not had a parking problem. I agree with Mr. Trace, three cars parked in front of a house, I don't think that's a pretty look. But, but building them as they come, I don't see that working either. Of course, I'm not a builder, so, is there some kind of compromises? I think you're going to run into a problem. And parking on one side of the street, where are people putting the trashcans? Are they going to put it in the driveway? They're going to...
Again, the cars, they...
Parking between the cars?
Yeah. What we did is between the units, we only showed cars parked in between the units, not in front of any driveways.
Right.
So, the trashcans would be on the driveways like they typically are. The, the hydrants are all on the north side of the road, so we put no parking on the north side of the road. There's two hydrants in the development to make sure that there's no problem with fire access or any fire. We don't anticipate people parking in the street. While you guys, there are some problems in this, this community.
Oh, yeah.
And, and there's different thoughts on that. So, you take a single family home, and you say, all right, it's four and a half spaces. So, now, are you encouraging multiple families and multiple cars, or you're trying to accommodate the one large family? So, by providing for the additional parking, you create other issues, because now you have the opportunity to put more people in that house. When we went with parking lots, so our first things we did for the county, when they asked us to do additional parking on townhouses in the, in the commercial tourist areas, we created parking lots. So, we did the regular townhouses, and we did parking lots in between. And then you have cars that are abandoned, boats parked there, people storing stuff. Basically, it became an area where people didn't want stuff by their house, they put it in that parking lot. So, it created additional problems, and somebody on the planning commission brought that up as well, that they manage property that have those parking lots, and it's nothing but a problem. So, we tried to create a system. We took the buildings, instead of having four and six built units or eight units to a building, so the interiors are your problems that you have, that you can't get the additional parking. Nick went to a two-unit townhouse building, so he had additional room on the outsides and additional room on the insides. So, every unit is an end unit, which is where you don't have the parking issues. So, he, he's tried to accommodate the drainage issues, which is with the multiple buildings and the parking, by giving options to a smaller unit townhouse building that they can use their own property to resolve the problems. So, in my neighborhood, again, we had a, a property that the guy had an additional car. He tried parking in the street, he wasn't allowed to. He parked on his grass, he got sighted, so he put in, actually, Nick's guys came over and put in an additional parking space for him.
Do you live in a townhome like this?
I do not.
Okay.
I own one, but I don't live in one.
All right.
Done?
Yeah, thanks.
Councilmember Cooper?
Dave, I, I kind of agree with you. I think we're going to be short as far as parking cars to be able to put them there if you start cutting down the parking spaces that you're wanting to do. If, we've got all this already set in stone. I don't see why we're, if it's not broke, don't go back and fix it. But we're going to go fix it for one particular coming through here. They want just one particular townhomes here that they want to change it. Let's go less, easier, quicker, done.
Okay. Sir, I believe it's an interpretation of your code, and, and you guys have the right to interpret that code. But under 3.93, 3.94, 3.97, all of the townhomes are listed as multifamily. So, under 3.93, accessory structures as multifamily, not single family. 3.94, your setback requirements for townhomes are listed under multifamily, not single family. And the 3.97, your minimum open space is all per multifamily requirement, it's not single family. So, we provided the additional open space. We did everything we were supposed to do for multifamily, and then you come to Division 18, and it doesn't say townhouses, it says, single family detached and attached. And they put that different than the multifamily. But everything under the R3 zoning that we have, the reliance on your code is, everything is multifamily, until you get to your parking, where your parking reliance says that it, that it's a single family attached, not a townhouse, a single family attached. Single family attached was a, a term that was used after World War II, when soldiers didn't come home, and wives or, or families would take their homes and divide them into apartments. That was single family attached. Then they expanded to family attacks to duplex and triplex. That was single family attached, a multiple living unit on one lot. A townhouse is a single living unit on a single lot, is a multiple living unit on a single lot. So, as multifamily, under your code, our reliance through the whole process, three public hearings, was on R3 zoning. And then, after we already got approved on our PS with the three spaces per unit on our PS, on our construction plans, they asked us to come back and say, can you show us how it fits if we had to do four and a half? So, we showed them that we could meet four and a half. It's very ugly, but we could do it. It's not what our approval was. Our approval was for three spaces per unit. Our reliance was on your R3 zoning code, which lists townhouses in the code as multifamily. That's all we're asking is, the multifamily for your parking code is two units per, two spaces per unit. We didn't think that was enough. Nick's done these. He says, three spaces provides him more than enough for each unit. So, we did three spaces per unit in our original plan. We didn't rely on the two of your code. He's trying to right-fit the development. That's all we, we, we're trying to get to, is to right-fit the development. We were already approved at three. Our PS has three spaces per unit. The only thing different than our first three public hearings is our construction plans, they asked us if we can increase it to four and a half and show them how it would work. Not that we had to do it, to show them how it would work. So, we showed them how it would work. Now, so there's no confusion, I'm just coming back to you saying, hey, there's a discrepancy in the reliance on your code between section 3.9 and section, Division 18. We're trying to rely on neither one, we're relying on what we know needs for the development at three spaces per unit. And that's why we came back to you with this parking study.
Do we have any further discussion, my counsel? Do I have a motion? All right. Councilmember Trace?
Motion approved, resolution 2019-192R with the stipulation that all units are single-story, maximum of three-bedroom, and maximum of 1,500 square feet, and providing nine guest parking spaces.
Is that acceptable?
Yes, sir.
Do I have a second? I'll second that. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
No.
Councilmember Cooper?
No.
Councilmember Askew?
I'm going to say no.
Mayor Blackwell?
I'll say yes. Motion fails.
Motion failed two to three.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Yes.
So, do we rely on our approval of our PS at three spaces per unit? Or do we have to, to go to a changed approval? Right now, we're approved for three spaces.
We're going to have to look at that issue. We can't answer that question right now.
Okay. Because this was done as a courtesy for the staff. All right. If you could let me know, I appreciate it.
All right. Thanks, Sean.
Please, item number six, Madam Clerk.
Public hearing for resolution number 2019-204R, a resolution of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, amending resolution number 2018-153R, which adopted the fiscal year 2018-2019 budget for the city of St. Cloud, finding the city manager has certified their prior year fund balances and/or current revenues available in the budget for additional projects and programs in various funds, not including the original budget, requiring the budget to be increased to include said additional funding in the various funds to make supplemental contributions within the funds.
Good evening, counsel. Wendy Colazo, Finance Director. Resolution 204 is the presentation of budget amendment number five for a total of $2.1 million. $1,650,000 of that will be coming from the water fund in order to do a equipment purchase for the construction phase to remove excess sulfur from the raw water, which will reduce the cost and use of the resin.
from the raw water, which will reduce the, um, cost and use of the resin. The second item is four hundred and fifty thousand coming in from Medical Self, uh, the revenue prior year fund balance to cover actual expenses that were more than the budgeted based on the medical claims, uh, that we received, uh, from the actuary report. Staff recommends approval, and if there's any questions?
Would anyone in the audit like to speak to this item? Have a discussion or motion, my counsel?
Motion to approve.
Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you. I think I was the only one that probably had asked in the beginning of doing a rollback, and now that everybody's looking for next year to do a rollback, so I'm gonna hold the rest of you to, the two of you or three of you that did say, let's do a rollback, I'm gonna look for it next year. Uh, I wanted it this year, but I see where we're at, so we're going forward. Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Trace?
On the, if you can go back a slide, um, so on the, uh, the water sulfide reduction, I, I didn't see that as part of our capital plan from before, so I just wanna make sure whenever we have these kind of, uh, capital improvements, we're just making sure that we have it in the capital plan, and then we kind of implement it through. And then on the medical insurance fund, if this is a trend that our insurance claims are gonna be higher, let, I, I would like to know this as soon as we know, um, just kind of a, maybe a month-to-month update or something to where we can see the, the trend, and if it's going, then we need to make sure that we budget accordingly and have enough money in the, in the fund, um, i- in case we have a couple of bad years of, of claims. So, you know, I'm, I'm fine with approval of these, we just need to make sure that we're, we're planning these things out in the future.
Sure thing, councilman. And to respond for that, we did, through the briefings, and the city manager did ask to receive the actuary reports from Human Resources that come in monthly, so we can start building the trend. Um, so that's definitely in there, and of course, the CIP, which is definitely something that we're doing now when these things come up right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a further discussion? Mr. Matheny, would you like to move the motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second, a motion from Councilmember Matheny, a second from Councilmember Cooper, Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
This brings us to council action items. Madam Clerk, could you please, uh, share with us item number one?
Resolution number two thousand nineteen dash two oh five R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, providing the approval and adoption of the City of St. Cloud Solid Waste Program Rate Study dated August two thousand nineteen. Approval, approval of the implementation of the rate scenario and providing an effective date.
Good evening, Kevin Felbinger, interim public service, Public Works Director. Um, I apologize. Um, but basically, uh, we had the solid waste, uh, rate study was brought forward in June of two thousand and nineteen to the City Council. Um, they went back and incorporated, uh, the comments that we received at that workshop. And I'm here to present the, uh, the, uh, final, uh, recommendations. They had ten of them. I would like to highlight the seven that we have on, on the board there. The first one that they have is they do not recommend privatizing the city's solid waste division. The second one is that the, the, they want to institute a solid waste collection impact fee. Um, to give you an update on that, we are currently in the process of, um, implementing the impact fee. Um, they have, we've submitted data to the consultant and are in the process of doing that right now. The third item is to plan for regular solid waste collection vehicle replacement. Um, currently, we're in a ten-to-twelve-year replacement program with our, our areas. It was my understanding from the council, uh, workshop, that the, they, we want to be able to go to a five-to-seven, uh, year replacement plan, which will, uh, decrease our maintenance costs and be able to keep our, um, different, uh, vehicles on the road more and have less downtime with them. The fourth item is to implement rate increases, um, including capital, uh, which is because this capital improvement plan, we, the, these rate increases are um, being required. Um, right now, our fund is being, being, uh, run at a cost-neutral, um, state, and so, like I said, so if we are to, um, start purchasing vehicles more frequently, we will, uh, require a, a rate increase. They also asked us to reassess the solid waste program rates every five years. Um, number six was to implement an annual tracking of fleet, uh, repair costs. Um, right now, we're in the process of interviewing, uh, superintendents for the Fleet Department, and so we are hoping to be able to bring somebody on board to be able to help us with this, uh, very shortly. Um, and the last one is to continue our, monitoring our population growth. As part of the, uh, rate adjustments, um, there were different, uh, components of it. I sent a spreadsheet out that had the, these different areas in there. Um, the first part was the capital improvement funding. Uh, this one, uh, asked us, it was, was, was be able to do the nine point three percent increase in this fiscal year. Um, they also, it, it, and, and during those discussions, we had the last, uh, workshop, it was asked if we could roll them out at different rates, opposed to having to do nine point, uh, three percent in one year. So they also looked at doing it over three years and five years. Uh, there was also discussion about whether, um, people outside the city limits would be able to pay a different rate for the gate rate. Um, and so they, they looked at different ones. The first one was where there was a split evenly between city and county, so there'd be the same gate rate for everybody. And then they also, and then there were other implementations where it was twenty-five seventy-five, and then where the county residents are paying the full, um, cost increase. And then the last portion of that was how we, uh, spread out our, um, our different, uh, variation of, of these rates, uh, whether we do it evenly or we implement, uh, implement as needed. Just to kinda let everybody know, our current rates right now, um, at the gate is fifty-one thirteen per ton. Our residential rates is seventeen eighty-five per month, and the dumpsters, we charge six dollars per cubic yard. As, uh, part of this, I was hoping to be able to have approval of the, uh, the final, uh, document that we submitted as part of this, but we were also needing some, uh, direction and hopefully approval of, uh, different rate scenarios to be able to implement as of November first. Um, the first one we looked at here is for doing the nine point, uh, nine point three percent increase right now. Uh, we did a twenty-five seventy-five percent increase for city versus county, and we spread out the, uh, increases evenly across the, the, the five years. Like I said, uh, with that, like I said, you can see the associated rates, uh, with that and, and where the, uh, the fees would have to be. The second scenario I'm, I'm bringing forward is to roll it out automatically over three years, as opposed to having the nine point three percent this year. Um, you know, once again, it has the twenty-five seventy-five percent for city versus county, and we're also spreading them out there. So you can see the associated, uh, uh, rates, uh, with that, and also the ti, the tipping fees. And the last scenario I brought forward tonight was doing the nine point three percent right now. The gate rates would be completely bore upon the county residents, as opposed to people who live within the city limits for the increases. And then, as there's also an ad needed implementation, that's a little bit different than the, the spread out even there. Um, so like I said, so the collection fees are a little bit different, uh, between scenario one and scenario three. Um, there's slightly difference because of how we're rolling out the, the, um, increases. Um, with that, I would like to be able to, um, have staff, staff recommendations for the approval of these, uh, of these, of the document, and then also I would like to have, uh, direction on one of the scenarios, on how we would like to move forward with those. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer those.
First of all, would anyone in the audit like to speak to this item? State your name and address.
Hughette Crumpler, Michigan Avenue, St. Cloud, Florida. I'm gonna have a very difficult time not being emotional about this. This is an absolute hot button with me. I'm insulted that you would try to raise a fee on the citizens for collecting garbage, um, if, if I understood what you're saying here. Um, so I've got a couple of questions and a couple of comments. My comment is, you know, you spent over a hundred thousand dollars for new trucks. Am I not right about that? That's the cost. When you, when you put the request for proposal out there, did you even ask for a truck that shuts the lid when you collect garbage? Was that even part of the request for proposal? And if not, why not? It is not right to have citizens go out there and wrestle their cans because you guys wanna leave them open. Now, that's, that's a call you make, and I promise you this, Hughette Crumpler promises you, if you don't want to shut the lids, we will get citizens involved so that you understand that's an important item to the citizens of St. Cloud. Number one. I've begged for you to do this. I've told you it's a public safety issue, um, and you've ignored it. So the idea that you would wanna raise rates on citizens for, for a subpar service is reprehensible to me, no matter what amount you wanna raise it. That's, 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 I'll, I'll leave it at that. But then I'm gonna also ask you, what are the rates, the, the tonnage rates that are being charged? Um, is that what you call tipping fees? Uh, Kevin, but, um, I understand, you know, one is residential garbage collection, so that, that's what I'm addressing initially. But secondly, when we take something to the, to get it, um, dumped, and it's, it's by the ton you get charged, I wanna know, what do you charge the citizens of St. Cloud? What do you charge the citizens of, of Kissimmee or any other place, and what do you charge the, the county? And what, what, what was charged for the coal ash people per ton? Because there's some discrepancies here in rates that make no sense to me, and I want an investigation, a deep dive in this before you guys approve it. If you approve these, these new rates, I, I'm gonna tell you, you have no justification for it that I can see. In fact, it's perverse. It's perverse that you would wanna charge the citizens more money for subpar service, and that you have such an unequitable, inequitable, uh, system for charging people for, by the ton for what's being dumped there. It makes no sense, and there's something not right about it. And, and if I'm emotional, I'm sorry, but this is just not right. I always ask you to do what's in the best interest of the citizens. Please do what's in the best interest. Table this and take a deep dive into it before you do something, charging people more money that can't afford it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I wa, I just wanna point out to the council that we hired a third-party independent vendor, Wright Pearson, who's a very well-respected engineering company, to do the, the deep dive. And so these are based on their recommendations, have a complete analysis of our solid waste process, our tipping fees, our residential and our commercial fees, so this is based on a third-party evaluation. Thank you.
Okay, uh, so like I said, I'm trying to, Ms. Crumpler was asking about the, the, the tipping fees, that, that, those are for people coming across, that, that is per, per ton. Um, currently, uh, when we are going to the JED landfill, um, we are paying twenty-eight dollars and sixty-six cents per ton. That was what they raised it to, uh, as of July first, um, because of the CIP. Um, so we had to make our adjustments to be able to do that, but like I said, we're charging fifty-one dollars, but that's also because we're providing a service. We're gonna, like I said, people bring, bring the garbage to us, and we're having to be able to bring that to our transfer station, bring it out to, to the JED landfill and, and back. So like I said, we, we, we are having to have more costs than just the, the tipping fees once we go out to the, the, the JED landfill. Um, so that, but our overall operations is cost-neutral at this time.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? Mr. Mizrahi?
And just so, for clarification, the city does not dump any coal ash, the city does not dump anything. And that is a complete misunderstanding of what the process, when, when we talk about these fees, it's, the city operates a transfer station. And the transfer station is a fees that Kevin is talking about, when other haulers bring their trash to the city's transfer station, that's what we are charging other haulers. And they're not, and it's not charged necessarily to residents that are bringing their stuff to the transfer station either. And then it's transferred, and where Kevin mentioned, then we pay the fee when the fee, when the, when the trash is dumped at the, at the landfill. But we don't, uh, we don't collect coal ash, we don't deal with it, that's it. And I know everybody laughs about it, but there's a complete misunderstanding of the city's involvement in, in this issue.
Thank you. Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. Um, so, yeah, we've been talking about this for a while. This isn't some off-the-cuff decision we're making without any, um, you know, analysis or investigation into this. Um, you know, when you came and presented it to us the first time, um, Kevin, one of the comments that I had made was, I didn't think it was fair that the city, city residents and out-of-the-city residents paid essentially the same rate, that I thought that the out-of-city residents should have to pay more. So I know in one of the scenarios that you gave us in the rate adjustment, the scenario three was the one that all the cost is borne by the out-of-the-city residents. So that's the one I'm in favor of. You know, I think it's, uh, we provide a service, we're doing all the work, we're doing everything, and, you know, I don't think that the county residents should get the same rate as the city residents. So that's the one that I'm in favor of. And also the, um, the impact fee that we're looking into, I appreciate you looking into that too, because that was something that I had brought up um, with all the growth and development, you know, we had an agenda item where, um, it was said by a previous employee that's no longer here that we were gonna have to buy a new truck to serve that community, and I, you know, was kind of of the mindset, well, why should the city have to buy that if the development is causing the purchase of a new truck? So thank you for looking into that. I look forward to seeing what, um, that program turns out to be. But as for me, I pick, um, rate adjustment scenario three.
Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you. Just have a question, Kevin, of Kissimmee, when they bring their refuse to us, and then we, we move it on out to JED. I look at the cost of what the City of St. Cloud did in agreement with Kissimmee, and we give them a two percent discount, then we give them per ton forty-five dollars and four cents per ton. The citizens are paying fifty-one dollars per ton. That don't make good sense. You tell me that this is fair for the citizens, and we're gonna bring it out of, out of the City of St. Cloud to us, and we're gonna give them cheaper? Matter of fact, the, I saw one other place where it said thirty-six dollars. That it can go down as low as thirty-six. So that's ru, that just ain't right.
Right, what you're referring to is, is the agreement we currently have with the City of Kissimmee, um,
This thing sucks.
And like I said, and the, 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 those are definitely, like I said, they have lower rates. Um, there is a hundred twenty-day clause in there.
This should've been done already, I'm sorry.
We want to, we, we can execute that to be able to get out of that in a hundred twenty days to be able to do that. Um, currently, they are paying, uh, forty-eight thirty-three per ton, which is a two dollar and eighty cents, uh, discount per that contract we have with them. Um, if, if, if that is the direction of the council, I, I, I can draft a letter up and, and be able to have the, uh, the hundred twenty-day notice them, let them know that, that we no longer want to have that contract with them.
Well, I guess my question, Kevin, is if we go up to the fifty-one dollars or anywhere close to what we paying and, from Kissimmee, and that kind of, um, tonnage that they're bringing every day, every month, every year, we don't need to increase the garbage rates here in St. Cloud. I can't see it. That don't make good sense to me. If the citizens are standing out here now, tonight, and they don't hear this, there's something wrong with us.
Well, there, there is, there is a provision in our, in our area there, for anybody who brings more than two hundred tons to our, our transfer station, they receive a two dollar, uh, per ton discount also, with, with our current rate schedule that we have for, um, for it. So like I said, so i- i- if, if we did cancel that contract with Kissimmee having a two dollar and eighty cent discount, um, like I said, they still would qualify for the two dollar discount, and so they, they, it, it would be a net of eighty cents, uh,
Yes, sir, but you're still down to the, you're, you're still down to giving them a, a, a break down to forty, forty-six, forty-eight dollars, and we're paying fifty-one, or fifty-four. That doesn't, that still doesn't compute. We need to, we need to cancel that contract ASAP now. That was why I asked for all the council members to have this copy that I asked Mr. Sturgeon last Tuesday.
Yes, sir.
We've got it now.
Yes, sir.
I, I, I see if we, if we raise this up for Kissimmee to where anywhere close to what we're paying right now, I don't think that in the City of St. Cloud, you don't need to raise your garbage rates up.
Kiss, well, Kissimmee has a very small proportion of our overall tonnage that, that we, that we bring, bring through there, uh, overall, because we, we, like I said, Osceola County does bring us a, 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 a lot of, a lot of tonnage also.
I didn't even see what the, I didn't see what the discount and what the cost to that.
Because they, they, because their contractor does bring us more than two hundred tons a month, so that they are receiving the two dollar discount that is part of our current rate schedule.
What, what does, what does the county pay then?
Uh, it'd be forty-nine, forty-nine thirteen would be a two dollar discount.
Okay, they're still less than what we are.
Yes, sir.
This was, I, I, I agree with, this and that, I think she is correct. You know, we start charging a little bit more for the out-of, out-of-city and charge everybody fair like it should be, what we're paying, we don't need to do this other part that we're starting to do.
Do you have anything else, Mr. Cooper?
No, sir. That's it.
Councilmember Askew?
So to get back on track a little bit here, um, I like the study, I, I read it. Um, I'm a little bit more in favor of the number three. That seems to be, um, it doesn't seem to hit our citizens as much. I'm not ready to, um, cancel any contracts on anybody until we look into it, um, out of respect of another government agency of canceling a contract and rates going up on their side, or just passing us over and just going right, uh, to the dump themselves. I don't know what those. I don't know what those are, but I'm for number three, if that helps. So that's two people at this point.
Councilmember Trace.
So, I put a bunch of notes down. So yeah, we have gone over this numerous times over the past couple of months. To get back to the list of recommendations, you know, some of this implementation of this new rate study is based on correcting financial issues over the past couple of years with the sanitation department of not, not collecting for a capital fund to replace aging equipment, not having a capital replacement program. We have 15 and 20-year-old pieces of equipment that need to be replaced on a schedule. You know, I definitely agree with number one, we should not privatize really any of our departments, especially one like this. The impact fee is something that hopefully we can bring over the next couple, couple of months. The replacement schedule, if we get into this, this contract with Kissimmee or anyone, I think just everyone should be even keel across the board. If there's a bulk discount for a carrier, everyone should just kind of get that bulk discount of the $2, $2 a ton because we get efficiencies with billing, we get efficiencies with their bringing, you know, a lot of refuse at a time. So I'm not, I'm not in favor of canceling anyone's contract. We just need to discuss with them what the rate structure is. And then Kevin, if you, you guys in the sanitation department and Bill can look at the operational issue of the trashcan lids, I've never had mine be open other than if I have it overfull and I, you know, it gets tipped and then the lid kind of just kind of flings back over. So I've only had an issue if I overfill it. But if folks are having issues with their cans, if we can get them new cans or whatever it takes to correct that issue. I, on the selection of which scenario, you know, I'm a fan of number three as well. You know, charging the city residents less on the tipping fee compared to non-city residents, there needs to be, you know, that benefit of being a city resident because they pay additional, you know, taxes for those, those increased level of service that we provide at the city. And then on the increase in the waste collection fees, Kissimmee just discussed on Tuesday increasing their fee because of increased cost. And I think the county's fee right now is 25, almost $26 per, per month. When ours, it looks like we're still going to be less than $20, $20 a month. So we still have substantial savings over what the county is charging. And then also the recyclables that we have and the recycling program that we have is superior to anyone else's. So I'm in favor of scenario number, number three and all of the other recommendations up here on the slide.
Is it all?
I'm certainly in favor of number three. I'm certainly not in favor of canceling a contract without having, doing a little more study on this rather than just making that decision tonight. I certainly support all the recommendations that seems, the majority seems to be making now.
Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you. Kevin, what, number five, what, what kind of savings in time, it would be five years to do it. What would, what would that, what would it slow, slow it down a little bit? So you're not going to charge the citizens quite as heavy every, every year?
You did ask for that and so I'll put up there the area that we discussed if we did it over five years. The only thing that it does not have on there is it still has the 2575 city versus county, which I think that's kind of some of the areas that people were kind of having issues with. I'll be glad to put that up.
Yes, sir.
So that's if we spread the, out over, over five years. I do want to note that as we start spreading it out longer, that the outer years on year four and five, the actually are paying more per month on the residential side of things than if you're, than if you're doing it in a shorter period of time. But that would be what the rates would be based upon that for the, the collection fees. Like I said, if we decide to do the zero, 100 for city versus county, the tipping fees would be different. But for the collection fees, that would be what that would be right there.
Yes, sir. We, you and I had talked about that and
Yes, sir.
The difference was doing, doing it that way and?
Yeah, if you, if you, if you just look at the, like I said, I kind of call this two ways. So scenario two was over three years. And if you look at the first year, it would be 1877 instead of 1854. But if you look at year number five, up there is 2161. But if you do it over three years, it's $20.89. And if you do it, the 9.3% upfront, it is 1971 for the first year and it's 2065 for year five. So like I said, so if you, the longer you put out that 9.3%, the more you're having to pay in the outer years to be able to make up for the shortfalls we have in these, these first years.
But what I was asking you was the question of because of Kissimmee is so much less than what we are paying, if we bring them up to standards as quickly as we can, 90 days, and bring that revenue coming in, then we could slow down and go to this five-year and no problem whatsoever, right?
I don't know the answer to that because like I said, when our consultant, when our consultant looked at it, it looked at our current, our current funding sources. And like I said, Kissimmee is a small part of our tipping fees. The collection fees are, I said, that was, that was something that, like I said, the consultant did not look at raising the rates for the city of Kissimmee.
Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. Kevin, aren't we talking apples and oranges here? Like the city of Kissimmee contract is relative to tipping fees. It's not relating to residential, which is what Mr. Cooper is talking about. They're like two separate items, right?
No, I'm saying you can bring part of that money back.
I know, but really I think the city of Kissimmee number would impact tipping fees more than residential.
They would, but I could, I'm assuming Mr. Cooper is, if you're talking about just a big pot of money, I mean, if, you know, if, like I said, if we ended up bringing in $50,000 more because of, because of that, I can see where that $50,000 would be more towards the big pot of money. I just, like I said, but when we're talking about, you know, the overall budget of the, of both the collections and the transfer station are four and a half to $5 million a piece.
So I was assuming that it's not a big pot of money. Otherwise, why wouldn't you just increase the tipping fees outside of the city of St. Cloud and cover the residential costs?
That's firm statement.
I mean, I'm asking that question. Is that possible?
There's, we always looked at trying to balance them because like I said, the biggest thing is at some point, there's a point to where it's cheaper for them to make the extra 52-mile trip out to the JED landfill and not come to the city of St. Cloud. Because the tipping fees are less out the JED landfill. But there's an efficiency of them being able to leave it here at St. Cloud and go back to their routes, not having that extra drive out there and have to sit in line while everybody else is and coming back. So that's where they're saving their money at, is they don't have to, you have to wear and tear on their equipment.
Time and gas.
And gas. And then also, like I said, sitting in line waiting to be able to tip it also, which, like I said, our semis experience all the time where the drive out there and back is sometimes the shortest part where the sitting there waiting to tip takes just as long as a ride out there.
Right, that's what I was thinking, they're kind of apples and oranges. But I mean, I personally would be a fan of looking into the city of Kissimmee agreement and bringing them in line with the rest of our fees. I don't know why we're giving them a special discount inside of the discount. I mean, I'm not saying knee-jerk, let's cancel it today, but can we, and it seems like there's enough interest on the council, can we look into bringing them up to the other, the other standard? And I know when I talked to the city manager, actually, we chatted about this a little today, and they are aware we're reevaluating. So this shouldn't come as a big surprise to the city of Kissimmee that we are having these conversations and?
No, they've spoken to us this week also. So I said, so I asked them to be able to wait till after tonight and then we were wanting to have a conversation after the decision that was made tonight. So I think, I think they're, they might be watching the TV right now also seeing, seeing the direction.
Hi.
Any other discussion? What is our pleasure at this point?
I'd like to see if we could hold this until we find out what the city of Kissimmee bringing up to standards what we're paying and reevaluate the money situation and see where we're at. If you could bring it, I don't care when you come back. Could we do that? Bill?
At the pleasure of the council, we'll do whatever you guys want.
You know, just, let's go to, find out what Kissimmee, bring it up to standards, whatever everybody else, let's pay fair, play, play the same game, be fair. Once it is there, bring that money and see what it's going to be, revenue. And let's see where we're at, one, two, or three, or five.
Are you making a motion?
I make a motion now.
Second.
So explain your motion again.
It's, it's just to hold off on the side until the city gets back.
Hold off until you can bring it back and find out what, what we're going to get up to standards of what we're paying, that the city of Kissimmee will pay. I guess the finance would do, do, do all the bean counters and find out how much difference that would bring into the revenues size of the city.
Councilman Cooper.
Yes, sir.
I think we need to figure out which scenario we're going for to have that conversation with the city of Kissimmee. Because if we don't, there's a, there's a large variance between the three scenarios. And if we go to the city with, well, we don't know which one we want, then it's kind of hard to have that conversation.
Right.
So I think we need a recommendation on which scenario and then allow staff to have those conversations with the city of Kissimmee.
I'd say either three or five, but can we put it that way, three or five, and make the decision when we get, find out the money?
If I may, I think I heard the discussion was that at least the majority of the council was in favor of three.
Right.
Okay. So I think staff has pretty good direction on which way the council is leaning with regard to the options that are available. You have a contract with Kissimmee, which essentially means we can always go back and try to renegotiate a contract with them, which is what I think you're asking
Yes, sir.
Staff to do. We certainly can do that, recognizing of course that if Kissimmee says we're not willing to renegotiate a contract, then the only alternative is to exercise the termination right and terminate that contract. So, but we're happy to do that and bring back whatever information. And of course, that would also enable finance and Kevin's group to basically come in and figure out how much, what the difference is between the current rate that the city Kissimmee is paying and what they would pay at a, at the standard rate.
Yes.
And then we can generate how much money that would generate for the city, assuming they continue to bring the tonnage to the city.
That's where I've been trying to get there. That's my motion.
You've got to change your motion now. You were wanting to cancel the vote. So the motion is that we approve item number three.
I don't think there was any motion to approve anything. It's just to move forward with it, at this point, to push it forward and then we'll bring it back for final action by the council when we get more of that information with the understanding that item, option three is today the preferred option of the city council.
Okay.
It is by three or four, but if I get the motion to go do what I'm trying to do here, let's.
Well, it may change.
I understand. Okay. That's my motion.
Basically, you're continuing the item with directions of staff.
Can we have a motion to continue this item?
That's what you have from Mr. Cooper.
Yes.
And we, Ms. Matheny, you still going to second that?
Yeah.
And can we include in that, that we're accepting the seven recommendations that Kevin made, that we don't want to privatize, that we're putting in together a capital plan and all that?
We'll take all that as direction. And I don't think you have to have it in the motion.
I don't think you need that all in there.
It's got to come back.
You're wrong. Too much orange is in it.
Staff will bring it back when staff thinks we've got all, we've got all the answers to all the questions that were raised.
Perfect, okay.
Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Cooper.
Aye.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Councilmember Trace.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
This is item number two.
Resolution number 2019-217R, a resolution authorizing the borrower not to exceeding $36,000, 36 million. To refund all the portions of the city's outstanding capital improvement revenue bond and taxable services. 2010B Build American Bonds Direct Payment Providing For The Insurance Of A Revenue Note In Evidence Of The City's Obligation To Repay Such Amount Providing For The Payment Of The Note And The Execution And Delivery Of The Loan Agreement Convening The Budget In Appropriate Forms And Non-Advalorem Revenue Amounts Necessary To Payable In The Principal And Interest On Such Note.
Good evening, Wendy Colazo, Finance Director. This is the resolution for the action for the Capital Improvement Bonds 2010B Series Refunding. And I'd just like to present Mr. Jay Glover, who'll be giving the summary, and we'll be answering any questions in reference to this matter.
Glover.
Mayor, council members, Jay Glover from PFM Financial Advisors LLC. And we have been engaged by the city to help structure this refinancing. And you might recall, probably a couple of months ago, we started the process by going to your finance committee and presenting this refunding opportunity to them. If I recall correctly, they agreed to bring this forward to a workshop where we presented the idea to you all. Based on a projection, we could potentially save about $2 million or a little over $2 million on a net present value basis. And you all directed us to go out and put the financing in place with the hope of maximizing the debt service savings and bring it back to you all for approval tonight. So we are here to present the results of that process, which I think at the end will be some good news because our savings have increased substantially from where we originally started the process. So again, just as way of background, in October of 2010, the city issued its Capital Improvement Revenue Bond Series 2010B, approximately $34 million was the original par amount. And it was a 30-year financing at that point in time with taxable interest rates ranging from 5.01% to 5.999%. And these were taxable interest rates because the city took advantage of a program affiliated with the American Recovery Investment Act of 2007 as part of the stimulus package where the city could actually issue taxable debt and receive a 35% rebate of the interest cost to get a lower cost financing than traditional tax-exempt debt at that point in time. Since then, obviously, a lot of things have changed. There have been a number of years where that 35% rebate has been cut down due to sequestration. It's currently at about 33%. So you're getting a little bit less of a subsidy than you originally anticipated. And the opportunity presents itself because these bonds are actually callable September 1 of 2020 without a penalty. So we're approaching the time where we can actually pay these bonds off without a penalty. And if I slip to the next slide, which is a picture of where interest rates have been over the last 10 years, these are U.S. Treasury rates ranging from five-year, 10-year, and 30-year. You can see really out to the right, over the last year or so, we've seen a precipitous decline in interest rates in the, in the market. That's due to a lot of things, mainly due to more recently, the trade wars between our president and China and various other countries have really driven what we call a flight to quality. So people are looking for quality investments. It means there's a lot of demand for U.S. Treasuries, which has driven those interest rates very low. So we're at a really good time to actually look at a potential refinancing of that 2010B deal, just like you would do potentially with your home mortgage if interest rates were declining and you wanted to refinance with a new mortgage. That's essentially what we're doing here today. So what we did is we went out with an RFP process on September the 5th to a group of local, regional, national financial institutions to ask them to provide proposals for a new loan to actually refinance the existing loan. As part of that RFP process, the submittal deadline was September the 20th, and we received three proposals to that RFP. Those came from Bank United, which does business as Pinnacle Public Finance in this market, Capital One Public Funding, and Sterling National Bank. Summary of the proposals, obviously, there's a number of terms in these proposals, but we start with what are the interest rates that each bank proposed. And you can see here, the interest rates range from a high of 3.39% from Bank United to a low of 2.54% from Sterling National Bank. I would also like to point out, one favorable element of the Sterling National Bank proposal is while their loan is essentially non-callable for the first five years if you were entering into this new loan, from year six to 10, you would have the option to also prepay their loan with a 1% premium. And then after that, so after 10 years, you would have the ability to pay it off at par with no premium. So if at some point in the future, if you did this financing and wanted to prepay the loan, one, just because there was excess cash available, or if rates continued to decline in the first five years, you would have to pay it off at par with no premium. So, if at some point in the future, if you did this financing and wanted to prepay the loan, one, just because there was excess cash available, or if rates continue to decline in the future, you could have the opportunity to refund this loan again. Perhaps, most importantly to you all, based on the two point five four percent interest rate proposed by Sterling National Bank, we are estimating, that the, not estimating, these are the real numbers now, the rate is two point five four percent. The gross debt service savings, so that's the total debt service savings over the remaining life of the transaction, is about four point seven million dollars. And on a net present value basis, we net present value those annual debt service saving numbers back to today, it's about three point six, three point seven million dollars on a net present value debt service basis. So, that debt service savings figure, the net present value figure, is about ten point eight seven percent of the refunded bonds par amount. And I mention that because there's a general standard in the marketplace and a guideline put out by the GFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association, that says, anytime your net present value debt service savings can exceed five percent of the refunded par amount. So if you look at how much money you're saving, and you compare that to the par amount of bonds you're refunding, if that is in excess of five percent, that's an opportunity that you should look at moving forward with. So, in this case, that ratio is about ten point eight seven percent. So it's well in excess of any guideline you would generally look at in terms of moving forward with the refunding opportunity. On an annual basis, the cash flow savings is about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Again, the final maturity of this loan is twenty forty, so we're not extending the final maturity at all, we're just taking the existing loan, and the payments are being lowered by about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year. So obviously, that's substantial cash flow savings to the city. In addition, as we mentioned before, this, this savings number is net of the sequestration number. So, when we look at the savings number, we're taking the debt service on the old deal, we're netting out what the city receives in terms of a subsidy, and we're comparing those two numbers. So if you include the subsidy amount, the debt service savings on an annual basis is actually much greater than this, but this is pure debt service savings of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year. Just as a way of comparison, as I mentioned before, when we came to you all originally with this concept, we were estimating, I think, about two to two point two million dollars worth of net present value debt service savings, or a one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars a year. I would, the reason for the increased savings is really twofold. One, just general old market conditions, we've seen a dramatic decline in interest rates over the last couple of months, which has really enhanced savings. And as you could see by the three bids that we got, Sterling National Bank was really through the market on this one. I mean, there was a substantial difference between the cover bid, the second-place bid, and the first-place bid. So, obviously, when we come to you at the outset, we don't necessarily know that Sterling Bank is gonna come through like they did, so we like to be a little conservative in our estimates. But I think in this case, the, the bid far exceeded what we expected, which is obviously good for you all. With that, I, I think staff recommends approval of the resolution that's before you, which will authorize the issuance of this loan, to pay off the existing loan and lock in these debt service savings, and I'm happy to address any questions you all might have.
Thank you, would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item?
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I'm David Meisner, I live at thirty-four ten Polles Loop in Stevens Plantation. I've taken a look at the figures there, locking in a lower interest rate makes economic sense at this point in time, especially when it does not increase the length of the debt you're servicing. I'm concerned about the lock-in rate, or how long it's a lock-in good for, and what happens if the market goes up, how long it's a lock-in good for, thank you.
Yeah, that's a great question, I could've pointed that out during my presentation, but when we got the proposal from Pinnacle Bank, they actually agreed to hold the rate through today's meeting. So that date is, that rate is actually locked in, so that's one of the nice elements of their proposal is, from the day they actually submitted their proposal, until when we anticipate closing this loan, if you all approve it today, which will be a week from today, we plan to close the loan October the seventeenth. So, that two point five four rate is locked in, you know, assuming you all approve the deal tonight. If you do not approve the deal for any reason, obviously, that rate lock would expire, and then we would just be subject to market movements in the future. But that rate is locked, assuming approval today, so those savings figures I mentioned, those are what you're gonna be saving, there's no exposure to interest rate at this point in time.
Would anyone else like to speak to this item in the audience? I'll discuss the motion by council. Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you, I just wanted to clarify something, I didn't like some of the language that was in the agenda item. It says in here that we're gonna borrow not exceeding thirty-six million to refund all or a portion of the city's outstanding capital improvement revenue bonds. When I read that, I didn't like that language, because I was like, that sounds like we could take some of it and do this, and take the rest of it and do something else, you know, because it says all or a portion of. But I did ask for clarification in my agenda review that the debt that we owe is less than, so I'm not sure why it said a portion of, and I don't think you should've said that, but it just, to me, seemed a little confusing, that this money potentially could be used for something else.
Yeah, and
And I was assured it is not.
And if, if you'd like me to address why we do it that way, is there are, there's, there are a number of maturities in the bonds that we're refunding. So at the outset, some of the maturities might be more economical to refund than others, so there is a chance, depending on where the interest rates are, that we might leave outstanding a portion of the old deal, and only refund a portion of the old deal. But in this case, the interest rate was so attractive that we are refunding all of the outstanding bonds, and the resolution before you only authorizes these proceeds to be used for two things. So, the majority of them will be put into an escrow to pay the bonds off on their closing day, on their call date, and the balance, which in this case is about ninety thousand dollars, will be used to pay the professional fees to do the financing. Bond council that drafted all the various documents, the work we did for the RFP and running all the numbers, and then also the bank has a council fee for their review, which, you know, ninety thousand dollars of closing costs on a, the actual final par amount is thirty-five million, five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, so it's a little less than the thirty-six million, we generally include a little bit of a cushion. So, other than those ninety thousand dollars of closing cost, all of the proceeds are going to be put into an irrevocable escrow on October the seventeenth, that will be used to pay the old bonds off on September one of twenty-twenty, which is their call date. And as of that closing date, those bonds are what we call legally defees. So once that escrow is established, those twenty-ten bonds, for your purposes, are legally defeased and are no longer secured by the city's revenues, they're secured by the securities in the escrow fund. So that was a probably long, in-the-weeds explanation of how this all works, but that was to assure you that other than the ninety thousand dollars of professional cost, all of the money is being spent to pay off the old refunded bonds.
Councilmember Trace?
I, I think this is a fantastic proposal, great interest rate that we're getting, good presentation, thank you. In addition to the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars-ish that we save per year, the interest rebate that we have to end up waiting months, if not years, for, of about six hundred thousand dollars, it's kinda nice to not have to wait on that, not have to deal with the feds on that, or them just saying, no, we're not gonna do it anymore. So I think it's a, I think it's a great deal.
Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you. Dan, do you get any, you're, you're in the mix of any of this, you get any closing costs and all this, and
No, sir.
You're, you're separate?
No, I worked this as part of my agreement with the city for our firm's regular agreement.
So, you don't get any part of this ninety thousand dollars?
No, there are no, there are no fees for
Nothing in there, no fees, okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
And this is fixed two point four?
Two point five four, fixed for the entire term of the loan.
Thirty years?
Twenty, twenty additional years, the, the original deal was thirty, and you've already paid off ten years of that, yeah.
I thought it was thirty, but, okay.
The original deal was thirty, you're ten years into that, so there's twenty years remaining.
So it's not a, it's a good deal.
It's a very good deal.
Alright, thank you, that's it.
Well, I move the approval
Second it?
Resolution twenty nineteen two seventeen R. I have a second for Councilmember Cooper. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Bring to item number three.
Resolution number two thousand nineteen two eighteen R, a resolution of the city council of the city of Saint Cloud, Florida, approving and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement of service between the Saint Cloud Chamber of Commerce and the city of Saint Cloud for services rendered, providing an effective date.
Mr. Sturgeon?
Thank you, Mayor, if the council recalls back during our budget workshop, we talked about money that we provide for sponsorships for other outside entities. And one of those sponsorships we've done for many years is with the Chamber of Commerce. For the last two budget years, we've given them a sponsorship of fifty thousand dollars, it was in the budget for this year. I believe Ms. Matheny and Mr. Cooper questioned me about that, I went back and looked at it very carefully, and realized we had, did not have an agreement in place with the chamber. We were getting pretty much a letter from there every year, kinda outlining what they had done for the city. And so, this is this agreement in front of you, to make sure we can formalize that, sat down with their executive director and put some things in there that, the council's, or, excuse me, the, the Chamber of Commerce is gonna change kind of the way they do business, they're gonna be more focused on economic development and, and less on events. And that's just a summary of, of what the agreement is, there's an addendum in the back, and I can read all those, but I think it's a good agreement moving forward for economic development and our partnership with the Chamber of Commerce. And Mr. Webb's here in the audience, if you have any questions to him, put him on the spot.
Alright. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item?
Good evening, Hewett Crumpler, Michigan Avenue, Saint Cloud, Florida. I would like to know what do we get for the fifty thousand dollars, even though they're shifting their emphasis to economic development from events? I remember very distinctly when the, the chamber leader, president, I can't remember his name, the guy from Australia?
Doug.
Doug, Doug, yeah, Doug was a great guy, and I asked him about, and back then, I don't think it was fifty thousand, I think it was less than that.
About thirty-five.
About thirty-five back then?
I think so.
And I said, hey Doug, why does the city need to give the chamber money, what's that for? And he told me two things that, that were of interest. One, this Chamber of Commerce, I don't know if it's true today, but back then, he told me, this chamber does not donate any money to political causes, okay? Now that's not true for the Kissimmee chamber, but he said at the time, Saint Cloud Chamber does not give funds to any political party or person or event, which I thought was the right thing to do, to not be giving money for political things, especially if our city is giving money to them. And the second thing he told me was, the main reason that we got money from the city was because they sponsored and ran a very elaborate and nice Fourth of July fireworks. And it was expensive, and he told me how many minutes it ran, and it ran a lot longer back then than it does today. So, I'd like to know what, if you're proposing to give them fifty thousand dollars, what's it for? And if it's economic development, I'm sorry, but that's their job anyway, to do economic development, and we have people on the payroll that we pay for that, they should support us as much as they can, because it only benefits the chamber to have increased membership and increased dues by any economic development that we have. But I'm not saying I'm against it, I'm just wanna understand, thank you.
Mr. Sturgeon?
May I put this up?
Yes, please.
I think this'll answer the question. Dirk, would you like to come up and say a few words, please? Mayor, may I have Mr. Webb?
Absolutely, would love to have him come.
Good evening, Dirk Webb, President and CEO of the Saint Cloud Grede Rosiola Chamber of Commerce. Some great questions here tonight, first of all, though, need to congratulate the council on saving two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Well done, well done. In response, and as our city manager has put this up here, there's some great questions, thank you. It has not always been the focus of every chamber to be involved in economic development, some do, there's even a quote for this, pageants and parades. And it has been my experience over the time that, over time in running chambers, that we can be of more benefit to the community, more benefit to the city, by providing value beyond that. We are a clear, concise, and dynamic communications channel outside this community. We reach out, as you do, beyond the city into the state, we have these strategic conversations with folks, that's a really bad term, isn't it, folks? With important parties. And we provide not only economic and government affairs efforts, but we have strong relationships with our tourism groups. Basically, what I wanna tell you tonight is, I don't have any reference for how it was done in the past here, but I can tell you that the way I like to run a chamber is to be in lockstep with the city, telling the same story, and, and being an addendum, not only in, in printed article, but in action, to promoting this city throughout the community. We, as, the last thing says, we'd like to assume a lead position in assisting the city with public support positions. I don't know how effective the chamber has been in that in the past, I don't have that reference, but I think I've got a couple of board members back here who can attest that I'm trying to turn this chamber a bit more toward weightier issues. Mayor, if you'll recall, one of the conversations I had with you at a recent ribbon cutting was, it's important to my members, who are business owners, business leaders, to have you at our events, not just to show up, but to promote what we're doing while we promote what you're doing. It's an important partnership.
Is there anything else you'd like to add? I think there's a whole list of things that people can see. Councilmember Askew?
As a board member of the chamber, I'm the liaison from the city, it's, Dirk, you've been here, what, three months, four months, something like that? It's been, and I've been in the chamber for over a decade, it's a breath of fresh air to have a gentleman like this running our chamber, it's, I get goosebumps, just some of the changes he's come in, and kinda cleaned up a lot of the stuff. I, I look forward to working with him through the years, and I, I believe that we're heading in the right direction. The fifty thousand, I, I know where it goes, and I believe that a, a lot of it can be changed, and I like his direction of going in towards the economic development part of it, but the parade is done by the chamber, I think a lot of people think that the city does that. We work in cooperation with the city and, and the Fourth of July, a lot of the, the events, one of the events we do, we help bring in business and we get them the contact with the, the public, and we work closely with the city as well. So, I really like the direction you're heading, and I appreciate you being here, and, and anything I can do to help, I would, I would do anything, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilman. I serve on the Economic Development Action Committee, and since you've been here the whole time, of trying to get focused on making a difference with bringing in economic development has changed totally, and your leadership is certainly a fresher breath of air, and I certainly think you're gonna take this in a whole new direction. Thank you, sir. Like I said, there's a lot of things that you guys do that everybody thinks is the city, but it's actually us together supporting it. Councilmember Trace?
I, I, I think it's great now, I, I see the, the direction and the momentum changing for the, for the chamber and for the better, I think we have a great chamber president, CEO now, and a, a great board of directors. But, you know, every healthy city, I think, needs a healthy business community and a healthy chamber to help promote that, that business community. So, I just charge you guys with making sure that you're promoting all the small businesses, ones that are starting, ones that are growing, and then, you know, just building up that membership base to where then you, you guys don't even need to rely on the city anymore, you guys have that membership base, and, and then them being investors in the chamber. And especially because, instead of just one voice, now you have many voices, and you have, you know, hundreds of members that are all, you know, promoting the same thing for the city. So, I think it's great, the, the way this is organized now, and the way it's funded, and then kind of the direction we have moving forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you. I think my green light was on there a time or two before somebody else, but that's alright. Just a quick question, looks like the city of Kissimmee, Bill, tell me, how much they pay?
I talked to Mike Stargwall the other day, Mr. Cooper, and he said they pay ten thousand dollars and then about fifteen, or about five thousand dollars in in-kind services.
In-kind services, ten thousand.
So fifteen thousand total.
Right. And I think that you used to get twenty-five thousand, then it went to thirty-five thousand, then it went to fifty thousand, and I guess I'm, I'm one of the doubting Thomas And I guess I'm, I'm one of the doubting Thomases, what are you going to do for us? Tell me what this $50,000 is going to spend, and where are you going to put it? And you're telling me you're doing the same job that we are doing for ourselves to try and get economic development here ourselves, and we're spending a lot of money, the city is. We've got our own staff that's doing it here. It's almost repetition. But you're going to tell me you're going to do something different, so I'm going to listen and just explain to me more what, what is going to entail with your $50,000?
Okay. Well, first of all, you're all welcome to come to our events, of course, where we'll, we'll give you a Coke and a chocolate chip cookie. That's, that's what we do. We connect business and, and have our networking events. That's important. What we have seen over the years is a steady decline for many chambers in membership, not all, but many. And that indicates to me that some things need to happen differently. As a result, had a major impact on the bottom line of the chamber. So, you all have been very kind in helping us with that. In the meantime, the difference, Mr. Cooper, in my mind, is that I've been having some visioning sessions with some of your folks, including leadership, and with some of our members. And I come from a background, if you don't, do I have just a second?
Sure.
I don't want to, it's getting late, and I don't want to. The town I came from, very similar size to St. Cloud, different, entirely different trajectory. We were a GM town. At the time, we were about 75,000 people, 24,000 jobs left, decimated the community. The answer to that, we had to think outside the box. Here, the trajectory is entirely different. You're going this way. And one of the answers to that was, how do we attract some international groups? How do we attract jobs back here? How do we build commercial bases? And some of the answers that we've been having in some conversations I've had with some folks have been, why aren't we looking at, or let me rephrase that, can we look at technology parks? Can we look at not just incubators, but accelerators, graduate companies, state-of-the-art facilities that can crank out? We've got O-Tech, we've got Valencia, they're doing some amazing jobs at pushing graduates out with solid skills. How are we connecting that? How are we driving business back in? My objective is not to do Antranet's job for her, not to do her job, but to work with her and double the intensity coming out of St. Cloud.
Will you, will you stand in line with her and do the same thing and try and do that?
Absolutely. We will work, I've made a commitment to city manager. We've already had a meeting with Antranet, we've had meetings with Veronica, and I think Andre, and we can already verify that we, the message has been very clear.
Can you put flyers out and try and reach out in internet, any, any way that you can, just any, out of the sky, pull it out and try and bring, you know, new, new growth here?
One of the things that we already did, one of the things we already did, Bill, you can, I'm sorry, I don't know who I'm addressing here.
That's fine, go ahead.
Is that we've already brought a couple of investment groups to the table with our connections and introduced, or at least had conversations with some of the city folks on where we're going and what is the perception of St. Cloud from outside by investors? And what they, their message to me has been, there is so much potential here, and there's so much opportunity here, and we want to help harness that. And I believe a stronger voice together will, will help do that.
Okay.
Does that answer your question, sir?
Yeah, I guess, Bill, could you, when you channel that and you bring people or whatever you're going to come into the city here, you bring it to Mr. Sturgeon, could, Bill, could you let all the council members so that we see it, we know it, feel it, touch it? We're getting our money's worth, that's what I'm looking for.
Absolutely. And, and again, if it's proprietary, we have to protect that, you know, company until they decide to make that investment, but absolutely keep you informed of what's going on. The one thing I did want to add, and that Dirk didn't say, and I know he's, we've had extensive discussions about the tech industry, but one of the things I learned when we were interviewing for Economic Development Manager was, we have to support the businesses we have. We don't want them to leave either.
No, no.
So, that's one of the roles the chamber does, is support those businesses and figure out how they grow also, you know, the mom and pops and how they expand. So, that's one of the roles they do too.
If I may, the, the business of economic development and these folks here is to go out and get us new gigs, get us new people. My job, along with helping, is to make sure they stay.
Right.
So, all I'm, all I'm trying to do is get the full council, that all of us can see in the years coming, this coming year, that we'll see that this $50,000 was well spent. And let us know, don't be hesitant and sit there at the chamber and don't come out of the office. Let us know that you're getting something done, we see it, $50,000 would be nothing then.
Yes, and I think that my board and some of the folks in the city can already tell you, they've, they've told me that I'm probably the most transparent person that they've had in that office for quite some time, so.
That would work. Thank you.
Mr. Mazzara?
And I just want to remind the council that the proposed agreement has a provision in it that requires the chamber, prior to August 1st of each year, to basically provide you with a report as to what they've done. And that was done intentionally so that as you're going through the budget process, as you know, the budget process is right about then, then the city council would, at that point, on an annual basis, have the opportunity to decide whether the value that the chamber is providing to the city is worth the budget request at that point.
Could you give it to us on a quarter or every six months?
Whatever the contract calls for, I will certainly do that.
What you're doing, or let us, let us know what's happening.
Yes. If it's acceptable to you, I'd like to communicate through, through your leadership.
Yes, sir, appreciate that.
Yes, thank you.
That'd work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask one follow-up question?
I'll let you do that.
It's a two-part question. One is, is the chamber still going to support us for the Fourth of July event? And secondly, I want to know, are we going to have assurances that none of this money, or not, the chamber is not going to spend any money on politicians, political things? Thank you.
Number one, to be clear, we're, we're having some discussions at, between us on what the July 4th event may look like in the future. Secondly, I can assure you, my personal philosophy is that I will work with any elected person, but I will never take sides. That was true in Indiana, it's true here. Because, here's why. I may support Mr. Askew in his reelection bid. What if he doesn't get reelected? Now, I've got a problem. And so, my idea, my thought is that we work with the elected official, but not with the political groups. Matter of fact, I've already been approached at one point in time about something like that and turned it down.
Councilmember Trace?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-218R.
Second?
We have a motion from Councilmember Trace, a second, Councilmember Matheny, for the adoption of this resolution. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Definitely an aye. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Bill, we, the city is going to pay for the fireworks, right?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
That's where I wanted to know. Thank you. I wanted, thought it was, and I wanted to just make it out. Okay.
You done?
Yes, sir.
Item number four.
Resolution number 2019-219R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, requesting the state legislature and governor to act strictly, strictly, to strictly regulate the disposal of coal combustion residuals, coal ash, within the state of Florida, to at a minimum prohibit the disposal of coal combustion residuals produced outside the state of Florida, providing for distribution of this resolution and providing effective date.
Mr. Sturgeon?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. If you recall, several meetings ago, council directed Mr. Mazzara to bring back a resolution, requesting that both the governor and the state legislatures prohibit or restrict out-of-state coal ash coming into the state, and so we're presenting that for your consideration tonight.
Mr. Mazzara?
And just want to point out, then, for some reason, there was one in the item that ended up in your packet. There's a minor typo, I don't know if anybody noticed it, but in the one, two, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight warehouse clause, the paragraph just ends with the word "state of Florida," and it was supposed to read, and the version reads, that's will be, that you would be approving, would read that the council believes requesting, urging the governor and the state legislature to immediately develop and adopt new regulations and restrictions on the disposal of coal ash, so to, among other things, strictly prohibit the disposal of coal ash produced outside of the state of Florida. And the important language to be added is "in the best interest of the citizens of St. Cloud." So, that small phrase was somehow left out of the version that got uploaded into your agenda packet.
Okay, I thought, I thought that just the period was missing, so that, okay, makes sense now.
Well, we've always told you, you can only do these resolutions when they're in the best interest of the city. So, we had to make sure that language, so.
Thank you. Valerie Anderson.
God, that is awful. Valerie Anderson, 714 Kentucky Avenue, yes, the one with all the flowers. Anyways, this is the bill that we proposed initially, so we're very happy to see this on the agenda. Thank you for not only listening, but hearing and including us, so we really appreciate it, and I hope that you pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie. Debra Gingrich, please take your name and address for the record.
Debra Gingrich, 6730 Owens Road, 34773. I'm so happy that you all decided to go ahead with this. I hope you take it further, get it up there. I support it 100%. Thank you.
Thank you.
Laura Tweed, 2808 Meade Avenue, St. Cloud, health and human rights advocate. I also support the bill, but I'd like to mention what I've been doing the last week. I spent a week in North Carolina, and this bill is very important to me. My daughter had surgery, and while I was there, Lake Norman was around the corner. So, I started meeting and talking to several people in that area. As local, we have a story that's been told about a child from Lake Norman that has thyroid cancer. The Lake Norman area is being cleaned up because it is an online landfill, and I believe it's Duke Energy is having to clean it up, and they're looking for places for this coal ash to go. This bill is very important. There's places all over North Carolina that I was looking to retire in that's loaded with coal ash. There's a lot of illness, and a lot of sickness, and a lot of death. So, that's what I learned the last week. This bill became more prevalent to me in the last week after meeting and seeing these people, and I said, when I come back, I'm definitely going to say something about it. I think it's very important that you guys know how important this stuff is. Thank you.
Thank you. Ronald Hutchins?
Ronald Hutchins, 2207 Antigua Place, Kissimmee. I just want to say I'm in full support of this.
Thank you, Ronald. Barbara Caddy?
I gave my time in support of the resolution.
She said she has a sign in support of the resolution, thank you.
Michaela Wells, 940 Mercury Drive, St. Cloud, Florida. I'll keep it short, I just wanted to thank you guys for your support in the past regarding coal ash and the leachate. I hope you're going to support us again today with this bill. We don't need to go into how important it is, but with a regulation like this in place, we don't have to worry about Puerto Rico or other states that need to be cleaned up and what county officials might or might not do. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Michaela. Would anyone else in the audience like to speak to this item?
Good evening. Hewett Crumpler, Michigan Avenue, St. Cloud, Florida. I want to thank all of the citizens that got up and spoke about this, brought this issue forward, and encouraged the council to do the right thing. Without them, this, this item wouldn't be up before you today. And I hope that you all will support this, it's very important, and I appreciate all of the citizens that take their time, sit here for long periods of time to, to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crumpler. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? We have discussion and our motion by council.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion from Councilmember Cooper, second by Councilmember Matheny for the adoption of Resolution 219, 2019R. Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Brings us to item number five.
Request council's approval of the proposed sign concept for Krabby Bills Restaurant located at 1104 Lake Shore Boulevard, St. Cloud pursuant to the terms of the lease agreement.
I'm sorry, there's a lot of commotion going on. Could you just read that one more time, please?
Request council's approval of the proposed sign concept for Krabby Bills Restaurant located 1104 Lake Shore Boulevard, St. Cloud pursuant to the terms of the lease agreement.
Thank you.
Andre Anderson, planning and zoning director. This was a request from the current owner proprietor for Krabby Bills to replace their existing freestanding sign, and staff has been working with the applicant for some time on the appropriate sign design for that site. In the current lease, there is a provision that says that any changes need to be approved by the city council. And the current proposal is for an eight-foot-tall freestanding sign that will be located within the public right-of-way with a total copier of 32 square feet, and also an electronic variable messaging sign that would be owned by the city and be controlled by the city exclusively, and that we would use that as an opportunity to promote the downtown and the lakefront with city messages regarding events and other items related to economic development for the downtown and for the city as a whole. This is the current sign that exists today on Lake Shore, and this is a proposed sign that would have the Krabby Bills marquee above, and then the electronic variable message would be below it. And that's all I have regarding this item, and we would ask for the council's direction or approval of this proposed sign. And here is the list of items related to the approval. It would essentially be allowing us to issue a right-of-way utilization permit within the right-of-way to locate the sign within the public right-of-way, to waive the six-foot requirement to allow an eight-foot sign, and also to waive the EVM requirements to allow within the professional zoning district. That's it.
That it?
Yes.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item?
Hewett Crumpler, Michigan Avenue, St. Cloud, Florida. I sure hope Ms. Matheny's on top of this one, because I think this is absolutely not in keeping with what we want to be doing with the, the vision, the image of St. Cloud. I hope Mr. Cooper's on this, I hope Mr. Askew, Mr. Trace, and others will be. I don't think there's anything wrong with the current sign, number one. Number two, the tenant that's there, do they own the name Krabby Bills, or is that a St. Cloud?
No, I think they own it.
They own it. So, they've, they've got, I think they have six years left on their lease, and I see no reason to make exceptions for this giant sign. First of all, I'll just say, I think we've junked up the lakefront enough, we should be really hanging on to the image that we have down there. And I will say, I'm 100% against any electronic variable messaging sign. I think they're incredibly tasteless and distracting, and we got enough trouble with people trying to drive there without running over pedestrians. The last thing we need is something for them to read in that particular location. That's my opinion. I, you know, it's not broke, why do we need to fix it? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crumpler. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? Councilmember Cooper?
Mr. Andre, could you? If we go back that, go back to the first where they showed the picture of Krabby Bills? Oh, right there. If you put the eight-foot sign right there, on the east side coming, it would be west, you're not going to be able to see Krabby coming west, you're not going to be able to see Krabby Bills because you've got a tree right there that's in the play, in the place of it. What are you going to do? So you're going to, where are you going to move it to, or what are you going to do? Have you thought about that? I mean, we're going to replace this tree, or cut a tree down, or what?
I don't, I don't, I'm not sure how to answer that question, because I'm not placing the sign that the property owner is.
Okay.
So I'm not sure how to answer the question.
The tenant is.
Yeah, the tenant is, yes. I'm sorry.
Okay. And I had, just the question was, the cost that's going to impair it here, the city's going to pay for half, and Krabby Bills is going to pay for a half?
The city has committed to paying for the electronic variable message component of the sign.
Is that half and half, or 2080, or what are, what are we doing?
I don't have the specs with me at this point. I didn't bring it with me. It's like 15,000 for the EVM, and I'm not sure what the rest of the cost for the sign is, yes.
And the other question was the, you got parking that's on that one side to the north side of the Lakeshore. If you're going to be looking at these signs that are flashing, you're going to have a lot of accidents real quick, real quick, because this is a two-lane road, and it's very narrow when you've got side-by-side, and you've got these cars that are already parked on a weekend, and you've got these flashing signs that are going by. I can see when you're going to have some accidents pretty quickly.
Is that a question?
That's just thought process.
Okay. Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. Well, first, I'd like to thank staff for trying to, you know, I, I know the idea behind this was, you know, trying to come up with like a middle ground, but I'm going to read you like the, the list of my comments. I think the sign is way too big, and I didn't know where it was going to be placed in our agenda package. There was no site plan. It was just like the graphic of what the sign was. So I was assuming it was going back where this Krabby Bills sign. I drive into this parking lot very early in the morning at, you know, 6:00 in the morning. It's very dark, and I think it's going to cause accidents. I don't like it. I don't feel like it's the right location for this kind of a sign. I talked to a couple of people that live on Lakeshore, and they were very unhappy with the thought of the sign, which I agree, because, you know, it's kind of a quaint down, you know, our lakefront, and then we're going to, you know, I'm not a fan of the electronic message signs myself. So, you know, I didn't really think it was the right place. I didn't think the sign blends. You know, the sign only says Krabby Bills, and then there's an electronic portion. It doesn't have an address. It doesn't have a city of St. Cloud logo. There's more in that building than just Krabby Bills. These are just my thoughts here. The biggest issue I have is we are in the middle of a master plan for the lakefront park. So I talked with Ms. Miller today because I was asking, does our master plan contemplate signage and lighting elements of what the downtown is going to look like? So it doesn't currently, because we're just kind of dipping our toe into the, into the master plan. But I deal with master plans all the time, and typically they'll go into like the signage and the lighting, and I'm like, I don't really think it's a, I think it's a little premature for us to be making any decisions on the sign that it might completely conflict with what the master plan vision is for the theming of the lakefront. You know, it's a $30,000 sign. It's not inconsequential. I also agree that it's going to have sight distance problems, because right now, I mean, I pull in and out of this parking lot at 6:00 in the morning, and it, it's dark, and I'm always afraid I'm going to hit a walker or something. And I know technically the, the, the trail is closed from what dusk to dawn, but there's people out there. You know, those are my biggest things. I think we need to not make any decision on this now until we have a better understanding of what exactly we're going to do to our whole lakefront park. I just feel like it's a little premature. The other issue is, I did have a conversation personally with the manager at Krabby Bills, and she was interested. I don't know if she reached out to other council members, but I told the city manager, you know, they're wanting to like potentially extend their lease, and, you know, it says, I think they have five years left, and four years out, they're supposed to start the conversation about negotiating the lease, and I'm like, you know, do you really want to get it? I just feel like there's too many like unanswered questions at this point to make a decision. I would suggest we move that post, like that cable box or whatever that is in front of the Krabby Bills sign. We can move that out of the way, but I agree, the tree is going to block this eight-foot-tall sign. I, I just.
It's going to be your vision, too.
I just think the whole thing is too big, too bright, too bold, and it's too early.
Seems like if we come out of there, that you're going to have that five-by-eight sign there, and you're, you're coming out of Krabby, Krabby Bills, and you want to look to the left. If you put that right there, you're going to blocking part of the hindrance of, of seeing to the east if you can pull out of Krabby Bills on the Lakeshore. It's pretty close to right there where the Lakeshore is at, the roadway. It's very close to put a five-by-eight sign right there.
But we don't even allow signs in our right-of-way.
No. That's another question. So.
Councilmember Askew.
The sign doesn't really scare me too much. I'm not a big fan of EVM signs, but in this case, we have an ordinance that states the use of them and the, the luminancy of them and where they could be located, and, and if anybody can do it right, I believe the city could do it right. And we, we support all these signs on 192 every time there's a mud run or something like that, and we have these flashing lights there, and they're the ugliest thing I could ever look at. But in this case, we could build or design this in a way that promotes Krabby Bills. I'm not sure how it ever got approved on, on the ground there, but raising that up, Krabby Bills leaves or whatever, that sign's still there. If we go ahead and do our master plan, the question I had for the engineers was, is this sign, can it be picked up and moved to another location? They gave me the confidence that it could, because that's my worries, the same as Ms. Matheny's, is we plan on changing this around if the money comes in, or we can find money to do that. If we don't find money to do any of this stuff, then we're still stuck with the same thing. So the sign doesn't scare me too much, because I think we could do it right. We're the ones that created the, the rules that came to it. If we can dim that thing down, if it's turned off at night, things like that, where we can also promote some of the special events that we're having. I don't know how many cars drive up and down that road, probably 10, 20,000 cars. It seems like there's a lot. So that part, I guess, doesn't scare me. If it's done right, I think it can be themed correctly and look nice. In flashing, if our ordinance, we read our ordinance, there shouldn't be any flashing. It should be a sign, and then eight seconds later, something else could be on there as well, or it could be, stay stagnant. So if, I'm, I'm okay with it, as long as it can be brought down. We can promote weddings. If you drive by Krabby Bills in the building, and you look upstairs, and it's nighttime, and the lights aren't on, we're losing money. We can't promote that building because no one knows it's there. We could barely see the Krabby Bills sign. So I'm for in that part of it, the economic development, the commercialism of it. Krabby Bill stays or goes, or whatever, there needs to be proper signage for those commercial buildings there. So I, I don't, I don't have too much of a challenge. I could see if we don't approve that, next thing you know, we're going to drive one of those trailer signs down here. We're going to fire that thing up, and it's going to be out there running all night long with the generator going, and that's, and we're going to go, that's great, we got our sign. No, I mean, if you do it correctly, it can be done nice, look nice. It can be very themed correctly, just like Disney does a lot of signs like that. So I think if we look outside the box a little bit, it could be done in a way that can change and manipulate to our needs on the, on the lakefront. You tell that the water's going to be pulled down, or we're going to have a meeting at the marina. It just seems like you can change so much with a sign like that, so.
Councilmember Trace.
I guess, I didn't ask this at the briefing, but what was the impetus of coming up with this? Was this Krabby Bills wanting a new sign? Was the city wanting to add?
Krabby Bills wanting a new sign.
So they need a new sign? Okay, because it, it was, it's, it actually looks rougher than, than it does in this picture.
Right.
It's about to fall over. So yeah, I'm fine with them getting a new sign in the right-of-way, because they need to, if they're not successful, we're not successful, because that needs to drive a lot of, a lot of residents coming out to the lakefront and enjoying the lakefront, and the big investment that the city's put into that, that building and the whole complex there. If, if we do allow an EVM here, we need to be the example of these EVMs and actually follow the rules to where we can show other folks that, you know, it can be done, instead of just, yeah, essentially movies playing at brightness of 110 all hours of the day. And then if, if we don't, or we, or we hesitate on this, it, it looks like driving down Neptune Road, Kissimmee is adding a sign right as you cross the bridge into the city limits. They have one going up, and I imagine it's going to be a messaging sign kind of similar to this. So just like Councilmember Askew said, there, there are benefits to these signs. It just needs to be done appropriately, and it needs to be done properly. I do have a bit of a worry of, we, we put this code and put all these codes in place, and then we say, we want to do a waiver to allow this in a professional area, you know, just all of those, you know, type of concerns of, you know, waivers on top of waivers, instead of just having the code right and then implementing that code.
I'd like to say, there's an EVM sign that you said on Neptune, they, they just put up, and it's not this bright, distracting sign. If you'll also list the same kind of EVM sign they put in front of the, of City Hall in Kissimmee. It is very, it's incredibly good. It's sharp. It's not flashy. It doesn't starly you, but it's just a really sharp, and it's basically black and white, but it's just really unusually sharp. And I think something like that could be certainly done here. That would enhance, and plus, you know, if we own that sign, then we're, we're putting out messages that would certainly help advertise special events that we're trying to bring down to that area. So I, I, I'm certainly have some concerns, but I, I surely like what I, I think it can become.
Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I, I, I see what Ms. Matheny has said about putting a large billboard sign out here right now. I don't see that there's a big hurry that we would need to do it today, next week, next month, or I would like to see until we formulate a little more downtown, or down there at the lakefront, what we're going to do, and have the drawings, and what we're going to figure out, the, the total landscape of what, we need more parking facilities down there. We're always tight on the weekends. It's, there's just never enough places to park. I'd almost make a motion that we just delay this a little bit longer and wait until we find out what we're going to do with everything down there at the lakefront, and get it properly done at the right place at the right time, not against it, just think we need to put it in the right place at the scheme of everything else goes through. I'd make a motion we do that, so.
Okay, so you're making a motion to?
We don't need a motion, do we?
No, not really, I guess. No, we just hold it off.
So you're recommending the defeat of the resolution?
Until we get, yes, to defeat it, until we get a little bit more time.
Mr. Ranzares.
Well, I just want to, is it, I think you should avoid voting it down if you still want to look at it and consider it at some point in the future.
Yeah, no problem.
So if you don't ever want to see a, a sign like that there, then, then you would deny the request. But if you're looking at, interested in seeing what happens with the lakefront and fitting some new signage similar to what's being talked about based on the ultimate plan, then we can just hold off on it until such time as the council's ready to consider.
Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. Can you go back a slide or two where you were saying, we don't allow eight-foot sign, or, but we're going to give them a variance? We don't allow signs on lakefront, but we're going to give them a variance? Yeah, I mean, to go back to the arduous task we had for the sign ordinance, you know, here we've got all these things that the sign doesn't meet. We don't allow them within the right-of-way. The maximum height is six feet, but we're going to let them do eight. This EVM is not appropriate in this zoning district, but we're going to let them do it. I just feel like it's really short-sighted to make any kind of decision on this sign when we have this master plan that's underway. It's not a master plan we're going to do sometime 10 years down, we're in it. I, I just think it's incredibly short-sighted. The city of Kissimmee sign, I drive by that on my way to work every day. It's not this big. It's, you know, it's maybe four or five feet tall, and it's got a pretty like, you know, top and bottom to it, and then there's just a small portion. I mean, it's not anything like this. And I know when I talked with Ms. Miller, we did talk about the advantages of maybe having a sign like this on the lakefront, but maybe it doesn't go at this entrance. Maybe it goes in the straightaway where there's no driveways, and it's a clear, open space that you, you know, like people can see it from long ways away. I think this is going to be tucked inside of trees. The visibility is going to be an issue coming in and out of the parking lot. I, I mean, I'm supporting Mr. Cooper's statement. I think, you know, this totally needs to be shelved until we have more information about the lakefront.
So you want it shelved until the master plan comes back?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, I, I thought, is it a revolution?
So.
To an approval.
Right, that's why I didn't think we were voting.
Again, the council approval is required because of the lease agreement. The council owns the property, you're the, the city owns the property, you're the owner of the property, the tenant is asking you for a sign.
Okay.
Councilmember Trace.
So if, if the tenant wants a sign, is willing to pay for a sign, if we, and it seems like council doesn't want the EVM there, if we just allow them to put a normal six-foot sign, meeting all the requirements, you know, on the property to where they can replace their sign, and then if we want to do an EVM somewhere else, and, you know, put together a sign package appropriate for the city that if they're in multiple locations, and they'll have the same consistency and all that as a part of a overall signage strategy at a later date, that, that's fine. But I mean, I almost feel like we, we muck this up by wanting to add to their sign, and, you know, they just, they just want a sign, right?
So if I could clarify that, we did not add to their sign challenge. What we did was try to find a compromise, because one of the alternatives that they offered was channel lettering, which we did not like, because they turn yellow, and they look ugly, and they fall apart.
And it's windy at the lakefront.
So we, so.
It is, I tell you.
So, you know, you could have the letters all shifted around, and, you know, a lot of delinquency could occur with channel lettering. So we, so we tried to find a compromise that would benefit both the city and the tenant, and we looked at EVMs and said, well, gee, that'd be a good idea for us to be able to advertise and use it for economic development. So that's why the EVM came up. It wasn't that, you know, that was the choice, and so we felt that that was a good alternative.
I agree those channel letters don't belong here. Okay, so I just, I just imagine they wanted their little four-foot sign that has Krabby Bills, and then we just added to it.
Councilmember Askew.
I guess the consolation prize, I was part of this little talk here, and we proposed that we are in the middle of a master plan, and I asked Krabby Bills more than once. I said, what about if we could, two, three years down the road, and we come up this master plan, and that, we don't even have an entrance in that way. You're going to lose your sign and everything that goes along with it, and they were willing to take the risk to do that, because they, you know, they're going to, they're going to try to be there. Or we don't do the master plan. We have the master plan, we have to table it because we don't have the funds to do it, then we're going to be pushing this thing farther and farther down the road. So I think that they're okay with, and I guess we can confirm that, but they were okay with if we made the sign with the EVM or without it, as long as they had a nice, clean sign. Right now, they can't even fix their sign, because it's not, you know, when they put it there, it just wasn't supposed to be there, or it's in the right-of-way, or whatever it was. But that's how it started. They wanted the sign there, they wanted some messaging, and they, some different solutions of what they can do it for. But part of this whole thing is we're worried about the master plan. They're willing to compromise there, and if in three years we decide we would just want to blow that all out of there and put, you know, a waiting pool in there, I don't know, they're, they're going to possibly lose their sign, and I think that they know that, so.
Well, Mr. I think it would be presumptuous to think that they're going to lose that sign that's there. Obviously, the sign has been there for a while.
Might move.
They're, 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 I don't, I would, I, I would be inclined to disagree with the fact that they can't fix the sign or improve the sign the way it is in the location that it's in, because that sign has been there for a while and was permitted, allowed to be there.
Sure.
So if they want to come back to the city, to the city staff and say, hey, we want to fix that sign, then we certainly probably would allow them to do it, as long as it didn't have the messaging on it. And if they want the messaging, then they can wait till the master plan's done and decide whether that works for them.
They can fix the sign?
We will work with them, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, remember that, you know, there's a couple reasons. They're, they're obviously the, the tenant, we have a lease agreement with them.
Right.
We have to act as a reasonable landlord, plus they're, they're an ongoing business, so they need signage. And so, and we certainly.
so they need signage, and so, and we certainly don't want an ugly sign there.
Okay.
I think we have enough direction on it.
Could you tell me what that direction is?
Direction is, the way, council, correct me if I'm wrong, but the direction is, the sign that you saw tonight is not a sign that the city council is willing to approve today.
No.
We wanna wait and see what happens with the master plan, if they're gonna go to some, some, have some more signings than they currently have.
Yes.
And if they want, they can always, they can come back to the city and talk about what they wanna do to improve the, improve the existing sign without...
Yeah, if they wanna do that, they could improve it, I got no problems on that.
Are you, are you sure that's a total consensus? It sounded like three people were kinda heading towards a different direction.
You just exactly what I, what I said. Got two here.
I'm okay with the EVM sign, as long as the city has complete ownership of it, and the rights to it, and the way that it's gonna be run, 'cause they wrote the rules on it. I'm okay with that, and the sign being the way it is, knowing that they know that that sign could be knocked down and, or moved, or relocated, and the costs associated will probably end up going to them as well, so.
And I would support that also.
Yeah, I have to agree with Dave. I mean, but it's, we, I think we need to put together a signage concept for the, for the city, and not just this ad hoc.
But it...
But I'm fine with it being in a different spot, too, and Krabby Bells having their own sign.
Yeah.
So, help me out, Mr. Manzares.
Good luck.
So, basically approve, approve of the...
I think Mr. Trace's position on the, let's, if we can break it down, the position, the first immediate position is the EVM piece, right? So, the, the traditional signage, I don't think anybody really has a big issue with it, as long as it meets the code, I guess, I heard, so, so the EVM piece, but it sounds like, Mr. Trace, you're okay with the possibility of the, an EVM sign being at the lakefront, just maybe not as part of that. But the question before you is, is the city council, is the landlord willing to approve an EVM sign as part of the Krabby Bells signage at that location? That's the question tonight.
No for me.
No.
And it would be a no for me unless we come up with a solid reason why, if we're not leasing upstairs because people don't know about it, and we need to get the word out more, or something, if, if there's another intangible benefit, or tangible benefit to putting the sign there. 'Cause, I mean, it's just, it's a difficult spot for a sign, anyway.
Yeah, it's a bad, bad spot.
It's so low, it's...
It pulls your eye, it pulls away from your driving.
I agree, I agree with Deputy Mayor Matheny and Mr. Cooper.
Good three.
Well, why don't we, why don't we take this information back, we can talk to the Krabby Bells folks, and then maybe we can, we can bring back some other concept that would address this issue.
Yeah, we're not liking this.
And we'll tell them exactly that, they don't like it.
Mr. Sturgeon.
Couple of them don't like it.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to unwind what Mr. Trace said a little bit. If I can get a couple other council members, we could go back and look citywide if we wanna use that kinda signage around the city, because I was sitting here thinking about a comment about the orange signs we put up for events. It may do us well to look into that, how we have signage around the city to let our citizens know what's going on. In addition, I've heard citizen complaints about, they don't know what's going on in the city, so that may be something, so I could get consensus on that, we can look at that citywide, have a standard for city signs, for information sharing.
That's another issue.
I think, I think that's a whole nother ball of wax there, but as, with respect to the lakefront, I think it all goes back to the master plan, like, you don't want, I know that we've talked about it, that it seems like advertising only happens on US-192, which I don't drive US-192, I drive all around US-192, so, you know...
By the car wash.
Yeah, I lose my vision for a minute. But, you know, I think the lake, there's a ton of people who drive down lakefront, so it might be an appropriate place to do really nice, classy, unobtrusive, non-blinding signs, you know, I, the City of Kissimmee's, I can take a picture of it on my way to work tomorrow and send it to everybody. I mean, it is a nice-looking sign, and it's like, as you come into the City of Kissimmee, so it's like, you know, you can see, like, as you come onto the lakefront, or as, but not where, not where everybody's trying to turn and park, and not run over pedestrians and stuff, so. I think that's a whole nother conversation.
It's just in a bad spot.
But, I, I was just bringing it, 'cause Mr. Trace brought it, and I, I do think it has some merit, and if we could look at that globally.
Yeah, I just don't wanna take focus from the list of 300 other things that we've thrown in front of you guys to handle.
Two ninety-nine, that'll be 300.
So, you have some direction on that? We, we've elaborated this point enough, can I move on?
We're just pulling it away.
All right. Item number six.
Discussion update regarding the South Lake Avenue right-of-way vacation.
So, Andre Anderson, Planning Zone Director, this is an item that was brought to you back some time ago. It's, we received a petition to vacate South Lake Avenue, and, which is adjacent to the East Lake Toho. Back in February fourteenth, the city council gave us clear direction that we would deny participation in the right-of-way vacation petition. Somewhere between February and August, we did some research, looking at some alternatives, and discussed it with DEP, Department of Environmental Protection, regarding some alternatives to the right-of-way vacation. September twentieth, the, we had an intergovernmental coordination meeting with the county to discuss the right-of-way vacation, and October second, the DRC for the county recommended approval of the petition to vacate the right-of-way. And they are going to this, to their board on October fourteenth to discuss this item. By way of some additional background information, the city annexed the Chisholm Park, and so we have, we have a large interest within that right-of-way. The, on the map, the portion that has that light green, sort of an apple-green color, that's the city property, that's city-owned property, that encompasses a large, a large area along the, along the lakefront. The properties that are in, that are at the south end of the screen, the, kind of the tan, the red, and the purple, those were, they're initial properties that we're considering for petition to vacate the right-of-way. Since that time, the additional properties in blue and yellow are also part of the petition to vacate the right-of-way. At the time that we annexed the property and took ownership of that property, the annexation agreement includes a provision that says we would also include any and all adjacent right-of-ways. So, the right-of-way in front of the city-owned property is within the city limits. The remaining right-of-way, of course, is still within the county, so the county has the ability to accept petitions to vacate that right-of-way. However, we, as an affected party, would have a say in that decision, since it would affect our access to Chisholm Park. It would also impact the park plan to continue our trail up to Chisholm Park. It would also be a public safety concern with respect to accessing those properties that would probably require public safety service. This map, again, is a similar map, just shows an aerial view of it, and the portion that's, and the portion that is excluded is the existing Equestrian Center, that's, was not annexed into the city and is sort of an enclave. When we had some discussions and some, some considerations, we were looking at some alternatives, and the hatched area that you see on the screen that's in front of those three properties was the area that was, at that time, requested to be vacated. And what I consider the little arrow piece is a piece that we consider as option one, but then, after further review, we discovered that that would not provide adequate access to get to Lake Avenue through city-owned property. So, we presented an option two, which looked at a larger area, which encompasses approximately 1.57 acres, including the arrow piece. The net is really 1.34 acres, excluding the little arrow piece. And, but the, when we did, again, further discussions with the county, that is under a current lease, and so, we would have right-of-first refusal, but we would not be able to address it now, anyway, as far as an access, and that site would serve, or could serve as a park, park site, as far as a, a trailhead to access Chisholm Park. So, that is sort of a summary of the issues, and I think city manager can speak, but I, for himself, on this, but I think what we're looking for is direction as to whether or not the council wants us to go to the county commission meeting to formally object on the record to the petition, or simply to proceed with the notion that we, we're still an affected party, so.
Mr. Sturgeon.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. There is another option that we came up with, actually, councilmember Trace brought this to my attention. We talked to the county today, Ms. Miller called Ms. Knight, and there's a potential for that 1.57 acres, for them to deed that to the city, and we would deed them an equal-sized piece of property on the other side of the, of the Equestrian Center, I'm sorry, I couldn't remember the name of it. But that, that is on, in play right now, and the county's looking at that right now. There's a third party, the Equestrian Center has to be engaged in that conversation. I don't know if they're gonna do that before their board meeting.
How does, how does that solve any problem with the blue, because you've got blue and yellow that they're wanting to vacate? So, how does that...
It doesn't.
It doesn't get you anything.
Earlier, I just, or I'm trying to get access to our...
Yeah, but then you won't have right-of-way in front of those two lots.
Not in front of them.
Yeah, you're gonna lose, you're gonna lose the city's property to be in, able to get into that two-story house, the city owns.
But we're gonna, we're gonna, well, you could come in off of that.
Chisholm Park Trail.
They would only be vacating that red portion, right? Or they'd be vacating all of Lake Avenue?
You're saying everything that's highlighted, right?
Yeah, go back, or forward a couple sides.
They're doing the Lucy property also, right?
Everything.
Yeah, all, all the colored, all the coloreds.
Okay, 'cause when we discussed that, it was, if they only vacate that area in front of those three lots, then it would be the swap, and then we'd actually get probably a better entrance, 'cause driving down Bradley Gale and making the right, it's just kinda awkward, and if that's like the entrance to that side of the park, it's kinda awkward, but if you had a better entrance off of Rumel Road, that might, that might work.
Veronica Miller, Deputy City Manager. When I spoke to Ms. Knight earlier today, she had already had an initial conversation with Heavenly Hooves, and they are open to the conversation. She is gonna sit down with them the next step to go over a map. Regarding the vacation, though, I did tell her that, that this option of moving the site and absorbing the 1.5 so that we could do the trailhead and would work, but that we would still have to object to the vacation of the northern parcels. So, I did inform her that that was not gonna be accept, that was partially acceptable, as you are saying, but that it wouldn't make it fully acceptable. She understood that.
Would anyone in the honor like to speak to the sign before we go into further?
Good evening, Hewitt, Crumpler, Michigan, Havenu, St. Cloud, Florida. I'm thoroughly confused. I want to understand what, what is the purpose of, maybe Mr. Manzares can help us, what is the purpose of the vacating of this, I guess, the orange, red, and purple? Is that right?
No.
And the blue, and the, and the yellow, all of these?
These are property owners that own the lot.
The red, the purple, and the orange?
Those are non-city properties, they're privately owned.
Privately owned property.
And what is their objective?
The way that most of them access their property now is they drive down the side of what's called Bradley Gale Road, and then...
I know the road well.
...go to Lakefront.
They turn off Rumel Road on Bradley Gale.
They're wanting to have access to be able to build docks. They can't do that with that right, unless that right-of-way is vacated.
Mm-hmm. Unless the blue, unless the blue and the yellow are vacated?
Those are property owners.
The blue and the yellow?
And the red, and the, and the orange, and the whatever.
So, there's five property owners? Five, not three?
Yeah.
Last time, I thought this was three property owners, it involved...
As Mr. Anderson pointed out, the original request involved three, but those other property owners have since joined that request.
Yeah, well, I think it's a pretty, I'm not sure how to describe this, I mean, this is city property, how do they even think about, you know, vacating this?
It's not city property.
It's not?
No, ma'am. The, the issue that is being presented to the city council is the city, the city owns all that property that's in light green.
Right.
The right-of-way that runs along the lake, between the properties in green, and then the various other color properties, part of it is jurisdictionally within the city, part of that right, that right-of-way is jurisdictionally in the county. So, the app, the individual, the private property owners have approached the county and said, the right-of-way that is adjacent to our property, which is jurisdictionally in the county, we would like you to vacate that right-of-way. And the question before the city council now is, because we are the neighboring property owners to the vacation, is whether we want to object to that vacation. The county has authority to vacate it. Vacations of right-of-ways should only be done when there's no longer public, no longer a public purpose or public use for that, for that right-of-way. It's the city's position that there is a need for that right-of-way to basically access the city's property, so it doesn't meet the typical legal requirements for a right-of-way vacation, and that's the position we would maintain to the county commission, if the council wants to move forward.
Okay, so you're saying they, I'm assuming, I think I understand that you're saying, we want to maintain that right-of-way for the city?
Yep.
We would wanna preserve that, no matter what these five citizens want? It, I mean, everybody'd like to have a dock, but, you know, the idea that the city would have to give up right-of-way like that, I don't understand that, why we would want to. And secondly, can they do that if we object? Can they do that?
Yes, ma'am.
They can still do it, anyway?
Yes, ma'am.
So, what, what is this other big piece of property you were talking about? What is that gonna provide? I don't understand that. Maybe Andre can help me.
Well, and just typically, typically in a right-of-way request, the, the one issue that the, the jurisdictional authority has to do is, can the, can all the property owners who have access over the existing right-of-way, can they get access through, through some other means? So, the concept was, if the city had access to that larger piece of property, then the city would have a different way of accessing its property, and then the portions of the right-of-way by, on Lake Avenue for that multicolored pieces wouldn't be a necessity anymore. That's general.
Just a quick question. Are you saying that this hatched, are you, Hewitt Crumpler, are you saying that the hatched piece of property would give us access to the, our apple-green area, but it would not preserve the lakefront part of our property and our right-of-way on the lakefront?
No, ma'am.
We would have to, we would have to give up our lakefront access, is that right?
No, ma'am, that's not what we're saying.
Okay.
Again, remember this, please, council. The county, Osceola County only has jurisdictional authority to vacate that portion of lakefront in front of the property that's located in the county. They cannot do anything related to the property that's located, that's in the city. That, all that green area is in the city, so anything they do on Monday, if they move forward with a right-of-way vacation, will have no impact on the portion of Lake Avenue that runs in front of the city property.
Andre, you wanna address the little corner there?
So, yes, so, again, this option that we were considering was only if those three properties were to be vacated. Now that we've added the additional properties on the north, it complicates this proposal, because regardless, if we had access here as a trailhead, we would still not have ability to go past the other properties on the north, so this option doesn't work if we don't, if those properties further north are vacated.
Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. So, in my tenure of working for the government, I have had these instances, when the vacation has happened, we, you know, we always have something come up, and it's like, and then you're like researching, and you're like, well, shoot, there was an easement, there was a right-of-way, there was this, there was that, like, why did they give it up? You know, because at the time, the powers that be thought, we don't need that. And I know there's, you know, there's very limited access to the lakes in Osceola County. So, to me, I am adamantly opposed to vacating any right-of-way that's adjacent to the lake, 'cause it's just like a limited resource, and no one's ever gonna give it back to us, I guarantee you, when we go in ten years, and we're like, shoot, we should have put on this, and it's like, oh, yeah, a million dollars, you can buy that back. So, you know, this option, I think, is very palatable in this scenario here, if we got this 1.57, I mean, I could... If we got this 1.57, I mean, I could live with the 1.28, getting that away, because this is maybe a better trailhead. But then you have Jack-o'-lantern teeth down by the other three parcels. It was like three parcels. So I had come up with a way for them, because I knew what their goal was, is they all want a dock. So you, everybody's been to the beach, where you've got the beach on one side, you got a road, and then you've got the intercoastal, and people live their house on this side of the road, and then they've got a dock on that side of the road. So, you know, the thought was, why can't you do a scenario like this at, at the lakefront? So, there is another option, and, and I liked it, you know, not just because I kinda came up with it, but, but I was like, let's say the right-of-way, I'm just gonna make up numbers, let's say the right-of-way is 50 feet. Well, let's move the right-of-way five feet into their property. So they give up five feet of their property that their house is on, and then we give them five feet on the lakeside. That way, you have property on either side of this right-of-way, and you can build a dock, but we maintain our access. That never seems to take any legs, I don't know why. But, you know, my first thing is like, no. Second, I'm like, I can live with that and with the land swap here. I mean, there's a lot of things that would have to happen. The City Manager told me this whole property is fenced. I mean, if we went into some kind of swap deal, I would want no cost to the city, like as far as like creating the documents, recording the documents, moving fences, like all that. But I would be opposed to the blue and yellow being vacated. I know there is discussion at the county to put an easement, like vacate the property but put an easement over it, but the easement is very limited. And in my experience with easements, it has to say exactly what you want to put in the easement, or you can't do it. And there was no trail or sidewalk path. It says ingress egress, but I guarantee you what happens when you try to put a path in there, you're gonna end up in a legal battle because they're gonna say, well, I just said you could just walk through there, not that you could put a, you know, I don't know, it needs to say drainage, sidewalk, trail, utilities, you know, anything you can think of that could ever possibly, you know, go down that right-of-way. But I, I mean, I think we should just say, no. I don't know, you know, the county may completely ignore that. So maybe the idea is, okay, we'll do the swap for these three, but then these three, I don't know, is it, it's only, it's two lots, but one anyways, those other...
It's two, two separate owners.
Those two, you know, I mean, there is a way that they could get their dock. I, I just don't think we should vacate the right-of-way. That's like another short-sighted decision that we'll regret, I guarantee you.
I say leave it where it's at, we keep what we've got.
Mr. Askew?
So Bradley Gale Road, is that a county road?
Yes. Well, it's, yeah, it's a county road.
County maintained.
Yes, it's county maintained.
Okay. Because when I think at first, it was, they were saying it was a private road, and they took care of it, but then I just saw the county took care of it.
Took care of it.
Yeah. They redid the whole road, so, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with splitting the road if they're okay with, in docks out front, but yeah, I think if you give the land, you're not gonna ever get it back.
No, you'll never get it back.
Yeah, never get it back.
Councilwoman Trace?
Yeah, I, I'm not a fan of giving them the dock on the other side, because that's, they're just going to essentially claim it as their property in between.
Sure, later it will.
You're, you're, you're never gonna get it back. So if, if they can't make a palatable swap, then just object to the whole thing. My worry is they're just gonna go ahead with whatever they want anyway, vacate the whole thing, and then we'll have to fight them on it.
Is it, is this a one vote at the county?
I don't know how, I don't know, I haven't seen the agenda. I don't, I don't know how they, I don't know if they've gotten on for a discussion, or if they've gotten on for adoption. Right-of-ways usually require an adoption of an ordinance, which...
Right, but it's not two votes, it's one vote.
No, the county can do it in one, yes. So they don't have to do introduction and do an ordinance. And I was gonna add on your, your suggestion about sort of jogging the road and giving up, and I haven't talked to the county attorney about this, but in theory, the county could do that without us being involved in it. Because again, the porce, the, I think you talked about maybe a five-foot of moving there. The five-foot would be property that is jurisdictionally in the county. And it's so, and so the, I don't know how they would do it from a legal perspective, but they could move five feet, give up five feet of their right-of-way by quit claiming it to the property owners. And then the property owners would actually own a five-foot strip between the existing right-of-way and the lake, which would allow them, but the county, the city wouldn't be part of that, because we don't have the rights to that property that would have to be given up. The property owners want to own a piece of property adjacent to the lake, which enables them to get, build a dock. So, and so the only thing really in play is the property in front of the private property owners, which we have no jurisdiction over.
Councilwoman Askew?
So, yeah, and they don't, they don't want to get rid of the roads, the road's gonna stay there. And if the road's the county road, and we give up that land and we take the 1.57 acres, well, now we have to build a road to get to. So it doesn't seem like much of a win really for, but I think, I, I know at least one of the property owners there, they're, they just want the dock. So I like, Deputy Mayor Matheny, like the idea of going, and if we can work with the county and say, hey, look, let's give them their dock, let's leave the road there, and case closed, isn't it?
Yeah, but respectfully, I'm not sure what working with the county we would be able to do, because again, it's their jurisdictional issue completely. I mean, I certainly can pick up the phone and call the county attorney and say, hey, what about this?
But yeah, have they been proposed that? That's the whole thing.
I have no idea.
We, we did discuss it with Ms. Knight and Mr. Fisher.
It's a little bit more complicated. It makes for an interesting, you know, 100 years from now, someone's gonna look back on the prop and go, what the heck happened?
Councilwoman Trace?
Yeah, it looks like they have a easement on there, over that portion, and then the vacation of the right-of-way. So it looks like they're gonna vacate it, make it a private road, and then have an easement for access on it.
Yeah, but what's the easement say?
Yeah, it's just, it's a blanket, and it's even, it has a lot of blanks to it.
But I mean, it just says ingress egress and something, right? My experience with easements is if you want a sidewalk, it's gotta say sidewalk.
Non-exclusive easement.
If you want a trail, it's gotta say trail.
Yeah.
You're right.
You can't go back and be like, well, it says utility, is drainage a utility? Can we put the, you know, it's never...
Well, that's something we need to know, because if there are plans to put utilities in there, then we'd have to make sure that would be an easement.
I just put everything in there.
So I, I have a feeling it's going to get vacated regardless of what we say.
Right.
So if we come up with a palatable solution that kind of gets what we want, then...
Well, I guess for tonight, we need direction from the Council, how you want to approach it. I mean, we, we certainly, I don't, Mr. Sturgeon gets to pick who goes, but I certainly can go to the County Commission meeting on Monday and bring a staff member with me, and stand up there and object to the vacation initially. And if they do talk about the easement, make a request for a greater easement, we can certainly do that. If that's what, if that's a, but...
Let them have the dock, but still leave the...
And we, we, we wouldn't, we're not gonna address the dock issue, because that's a state permitting issue that deals with the county and all that stuff, so, you know, our, our intention would be to go in front of the County Commission, say, this is the city property, we're a neighboring property owner, that doesn't meet the requirements to vacate right-of-way, we need the right-of-way for access for our park and for the future plan of the park, and we object strenuously to you vacating it. If they dive in and say, we want to talk about an easement, then we can say, well, at least I'll look at the agenda item, but if there is an easement, then we'll point out that if you are gonna vacate it, that we want as wide open as an easement as we can get.
Is it normal for a government agency to fix a road and then turn around and make it a private road?
Not usually.
Right. That's why I, the first time I've heard about the, turn it back into a private road.
I don't know, I don't, yeah, that's not...
I think Lake would be private, not Bradley Gale.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the, I'm, I'm concerned, I mean, I guess you'll be able to handle it, but I'm concerned they're just not gonna care what we think.
Yeah, pretty much it's gonna just...
But I think, I mean, I just don't think, like, we have a Trails Master Plan, right? Like, does it show a trail in this? So I think we need to bring that up, like, this is a trail corridor for us, like, bring it and show that graphic, like, you know, I mean, the easement, to me, when we've, when I've done easements, we put everything you can think of under the sun, even if we don't have it planned right now, because it always comes back. Like, you put drainage, you put utilities, you put sidewalk, you put trail, you put, you know, grading, you put, you know, signage, you put every single thing you could think you can put in there. But I, I, it would be very unfortunate if that gets vacated, it would really create a problem for us, so...
Well, we are, we are an adjacent property owner, right? Owner, that means we have rights. So in theory...
We're the majority.
In, you know, in, in theory, and we have been involved in these on behalf of governments before, private property owners have a, have a litig, have a right to enforce in a potential lawsuit if they do want to do that. We certainly can circle back with you afterwards and decide how you want to approach that.
Councilwoman Askew?
So are we in agreement as council that, I think, we're, they, the three there, the two on the north side, that's new to me, but I think we're in agree, we want the folks to be able to have their docks, and, but we still want access to the park. Are we okay with...
There'd be a compromise.
Yeah. Is that what the council's thinking? We, we want, still want to be able to use the road, but is there some compromise that will allow them to put a dock in?
The three south ones, the three south ones, I think there's an amenable solution.
Right.
It's the, but then do you, okay, you guys can have it, but you guys can't, I mean...
I, I don't personally like a trail cutting between someone's house and their dock. It just, 50 years from now, it'll be...
Don't work good.
An issue, yeah.
They'll want it all. Down the road, it's theirs.
It's done everywhere, so...
But if you're not gonna get the other, come away with something. Come away with something.
Right.
Certainly, object to start, that'd be your first option, but then what's option number two?
And take the Trail Master Plan.
Yeah.
Ms. Askew asked me about the issue of what precedent would be set by it, and we certainly could, again, it's the county making the decision, we certainly could say, this is a bad precedent for you to set with regard to county jurisdictional issues when it comes to this.
But then also every house down Lake Shore Boulevard, asking for a dock on the other side of Lake Shore Boulevard, by the way.
But there's no Lake Shore Boulevard anymore, they already vacated it to the north.
No, no, no. All the way the front edge of the lakefront, where the bonds are. Every property there, owner there would ask for a dock on the other side of...
But they can have it.
Yeah, they can have it.
They can have it. They're not, there's nothing separating them from the lake.
There's no road.
No, no, no. Lake Shore Boulevard between, I don't know, Columbia and Eastern, asking for the same thing.
Oh, that's different, though. That's not the same scenario.
You're talking totally different, yeah.
It's a right-of-way in front of their house.
Yeah, yeah.
That's county maintained.
That's not the same.
There's property on the other side that's a lake, so it's, I'd make that argument.
So, if I might interject, there is another, yet another alternative.
Go away.
There is. And that alternative is that this is part of an enclave, and we have, through our internal agreement, the ability to annex all enclaves, and it becomes all, all county jurisdiction, city jurisdiction, so we have that option. At that point, they'd have to stop any action until we finish the enclave.
Go for it, there.
Unfortunately, if we were, if we raise that question on Monday, they'll vote to vacate it on Monday. Seriously, and they, if, if they listen to this meeting, they'll probably do it. An annexation of the enclave would take a lot, would take some more time to get the, too much time to get it done before the city had jurisdictional, what they're, the point is if, if we annex the properties, then we have jurisdiction over the right-of-way. But we wouldn't, timing-wise, we wouldn't be able to annex the properties.
Looks like a judgment.
Creative, creative.
Creative.
So we need to, we're gonna object. We'll choose to object, is that not, we're not agreeing on? But then, are we gonna agree to a possible option?
Again, the option that was, that was, that was on the table doesn't work if the northern two parcels are vacated.
No.
Because it doesn't achieve access for us, if we were trying to find an alternative.
I don't think there's any option.
Sounds like we're just gonna have to legally sit here all day, or?
Yeah, we.
Let's move. Mr. Manzares, you haven't found a counsel for us on this?
Well, yes, and I'm assuming, Mr. Trace, you actually pulled up the agenda item when you were looking at it? So the proposed agenda item is to vacate the right-of-way and grant an easement back.
That's what it appears, I was just skimming it.
Yeah, I haven't really looked at it yet, but I certainly will. So the direction I think I got from the council was object to the vacation of the right-of-way, and if they're gonna move forward, then at least ask for as much an easement that is wide open and gives us as much rights as possible.
Or with the land swap.
Well, I want that piece, if, if they're gonna vacate it, I want that piece.
So if we can get the land swap...
But that's not part of the agenda item.
Agreed. But if they table it, I mean, they could always table the vacation and work out an amenable solution with the adjacent property owner, that is us.
Well, then, we'll go, we present that to the Board of County Commissions and offer that as an option, I guess.
All right.
I'm in agreement with that.
So...
Then we'll report back to the council, and the council at that point can take action and decide what you want to do next.
Okay.
You know, I would, I would suggest to you that, not that we certainly, certainly don't have a problem with going in front of the County Commission, but in a situation like this, it may be more appropriate if one of the elected officials came and expressed the city's concern about it.
Okay, we'll talk about that. So are we done with this?
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion?
Judge Mayor, those properties, some of them are not, they're sold, they're for sale.
That's correct.
Yeah, some of them are just land.
Yeah, some of them.
Which ones are land? The north ones?
Did somebody say that on the record?
I think one is, is, are they all homes on there, or one in the middle just land?
The one in the middle's vacant.
Yeah.
But there is a home down further.
Right.
All right. Mr. Manzares, what do you have for us?
I have no report, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, I'm gonna keep this very brief. First off, 901 Virginia, the all-inclusive park, we do have an agreement in hand with the school board for after-hours parking. So we're working with that, Mr. Manzares's office is reviewing that, and the parking signs are up. So I've been driving by there routinely, and it looks like, you know, the use of the park's waning a little bit. So hopefully we resolve that parking issue. The second one, several months back, council, we had a presentation by Osceola Reed's program, and the council directed me to look for some money, new budget year, I do have some money to sponsor the Osceola Reed's table, which includes a two-person tech table with chairs, sponsor banner, Nemo on the table, two iPads with Apple Care, excuse me, mobile device management software and social media promotion for us. So if I could get direction, I would love to put one of those sponsorships together for those Osceola Reed's workstation.
Did you say how much?
It's $1,900.
And do we know where it's gonna go? Like, it's not going to Kissimmee?
No, no, we'll make sure it's in the city of St. Cloud. And then finally, I'd like to take the opportunity to introduce our new Economic Development and Special Projects Manager, Ms. Antranet Forbes. Please stand up.
I, I swear, all meetings aren't like this.
Yeah, you...
Some are worse.
It's good to stretch my legs.
Welcome aboard, if you take a second to introduce yourself.
Sure. In the interest of brevity, I will try to be concise. My name is Antranet Forbes. I am new not only to St. Cloud, but also to central Florida. So, I moved here at about Christmas of last year. I love it thus far, with the exception of traffic. I'm getting used to that. Um, but I can't wait to get started. I've already met with a lot of, um, a lot of the, the local businesses and key people, including Dirk, that got up, and I think he and I will work very well together. We have a very similar mindset in terms of the importance of not just business recruitment, but also, um, expansion and retention.
Excellent.
Great. Thank you. You're welcome.
Welcome. It's good to have you here.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Councilman Matheny.
Um, so, I just had one idea. So, I've, I've been riding my bike through the grid lately. And, um, you know, it's sad to see all of the vacant property that once was in the grid that potentially could be a park, or potentially something, you know, is all snatched up with houses. But I did see, um, some property, and I, I mentioned it to the city manager, and I'm just gonna kind of mention it to you guys. Um, there's about two and a half acres of vacant land that's got one, owned by one property owner, um, between Dakota and California. It's maybe about the three hundred block-ish.
Oh, okay.
And, um, you know, I was like, man, that would be a really nice area to have a park. Um, you know, possibly maybe a dog park and some other things, and it also ties into that linear park down Dakota. And so, a lot of people go down that. I just thought it was a really nice piece of land, and before it gets snatched up and houses get put on it, um, you know, was there any interest in kind of looking at it to see if we can, um, maybe put a park on it? I know, like, um, I know we're, we're buying a lot of properties and talking about a lot of properties now, but the property is going. So, it's like, you know, we could buy things and, you know, put them into a plan to put parks on, you know, a couple of years down the road. I know that land is, um, just a dwindling commodity that we have around here, and of course, money is an issue too. But I saw it was a really nice little piece of land, um, that maybe we should look at.
Lynette, that was in, in between where, to me?
Dakota and California.
The, the guy that owns Florida Decorating Centers, I forget his name at the moment.
I didn't really want to say it.
That's where they're mowing it out now?
I don't, mm.
Yeah, it's just vacant.
It's vacant.
On Dakota Avenue, to the west side, on the west side of Dakota?
Between Dakota and California. Just a thought, maybe if we could ask, I mean, if you guys are okay with it, to have Stephanie, like, look into it and see if, you know, it's a possibility, or maybe it's not. I don't know. There seemed to be some.
Had it at one time.
There seemed to be some interest in it, but you know it's just gonna have houses on it before you turn around.
Oh, yeah.
Is there any objection to?
Just definitely taking a look at it.
No.
Great. That was it.
I think we certain, that's it. Councilman Cooper.
Thank you. Bill, can you enlighten me a little bit? The new, the new park that we've got on Tenth Street there, the next street over to the east, what street is that? Maryland? Is it Maryland?
I think so.
I can strip by it, I think it's Maryland. Okay, Ninth Street. On the corner of Ninth Street, you and I had a discussion three or four days ago. Gentleman wanted to build a big, humongous, Lynette would love it, um, metal building. And he was gonna have it right in back of a two-story old home that he's got there. The neighbors across the street were complaining, the husband and wife both, and a neighbor beside, were complaining. And I asked you the question, and you told me, no, it could not happen. They'd have to go through the judge over and, and now I hear today that, whoops, it got overturned, and it's okay.
What I told you was the Board of Appeals.
Board of Appeals.
Had to hear the case because it was, um, more than fifty percent of the main structure. And I think initially, the Board of Appeals turned him down. Andre, do you have any information on this?
I can help if you want.
Okay, thanks.
Now, it's okay?
Well.
I, I never, I just want to clarify.
Okay.
I didn't tell you that. I said if it was not passed by the Board of Appeals, it had to go to court.
Okay.
That's the conversation we had.
Okay, did it get okayed or turned in, or?
Nobody.
I heard today that it was, the board said it, they, they, they had another hearing again.
Yeah, there was a, there was a Board of Adjustments hearing last night.
Board of Adjustments.
And, uh, I believe this was one of the items that was on the agenda and was approved, is the one you're referring to. It was approved by the Board of Adjustments last night, um, one of your Board of Adjustments members is sitting right here. Uh, so, uh, the, the, essentially, what, well, I think he voted against it.
Good man.
So, um, the, the, uh, the issue that arose, Mr. Cooper, was that, as you recall, this was a, essentially a special exception that was authorized by a change to the city code several months ago that would basically approve these accessories, allow for approval of these accessory structures unless they were a certain size. And if they were above that size, they had to go back to the Board of Adjustments. Uh, when that code was drafted, it did not include any language that would prohibit the refiling of it, of a request for a special exception. Um, as many of you know, the Board of Adjustments also hears variance requests. Uh, in the city code, there's a variance requ- uh, there's a, a time limitation. If you get a variance request that's denied, you can't reapply for a certain period of time. I think it's a year. It's one year. Thank you. Uh, so, there was not that provision in, in, in the expect, in the code that was adopted with the accessory structures. So, this permitted the applicant to reapply, essentially, even though they had been, they were initially denied, uh, a few months ago. And so, um, where staff is looking at changing that code, putting in a similar time, uh, a time restriction on reapplying uh, for the, uh, for the special exception.
Lynette, I thought, I thought we had this covered, so there wasn't gonna be heights, width, lengths, and it wasn't gonna be allowed again.
What, what changed, what changed that they got approved the second time?
This got irks me.
Yeah, me too.
I, I wasn't, I, you know, that, that meeting, I wasn't at the meeting. My, my, one of my partners covered that meeting, so I can't, uh, I can't answer the question as to what, what, what the application was. I don't know what staff's recommendation was on it either. I can find that information. We certainly can get you that information.
I mean, I, three days ago, Mr. Sturgeon told me, no, it's not gonna happen.
That, Mr. Cooper, I'm, I'm sorry.
Did you call the gentleman?
I called that, I called Becky, three times and left message, and never got a call back, so.
What message, did you leave him a message?
I did.
He was gonna be allowed or not allowed?
No, I didn't tell him. I was just calling, I was calling to give them information on the process, like I did the Conleys across the street. I wasn't gonna tell them anything. I was gonna tell them what happened last time.
I had a discussion.
Correct. And I just want to clarify, I never told you, I said the Board of, I used the wrong word, Board of Adjustments heard it several months back and denied it. There was only three members present that night. I do know that. And again, because of the loophole in the ordinance, he brought it back again, and apparently, they passed it this time, the Board of Adjustments.
Do we have any recourse?
We have to tie that loophole up where they can't.
I mean, before this gets started, this is wrong.
I thought that was his appeal process, which, that's why we have a Board of Adjustment.
I, we certainly can look at that and see if the council has any, next step would be to file it, to challenge it in, in, in court.
We've got two or three citizens who live right across the street there that are complaining.
What's the size of the structure that was approved?
This was gonna be.
I'm just gonna say it's huge. It's for a fifth-wheel RV. I, I knew.
I mean, it's like way oversized. It's gonna be larger than the house.
Absolutely. I get that.
I mean, it's, it's humongous compared to the size of the house. I mean, Lynette is complaining down here on Massachusetts Avenue, it's Second Street, that they've got a big, and it's big, but this one's gonna, make this one look small. It's gonna be almost half again bigger.
This is the one on Maryland.
Right there, two blocks away.
The, the.
Mr. Ansaris.
The requested application, and I'm sorry, I'm having a tough time pulling it up because I'm trying to do it on my phone, but the requested application is for construction of an eighteen hundred and seventy-two square-foot accessory structure. That was what was approved.
Yeah. Now, I'm, I'm trying to tell you all, this is what these two, three people are complaining about. And one, two of them have already said, if that, if that's built, they're gonna sell and move out of there. They don't want it in front of, to look at every day and night. Let's put it in front of your house and build an eighteen hundred metal structure right in front of your house, twenty-five feet across the street.
Commissioner Matheny.
Thank you. Um, I don't know how the other council feels, but I'd like to see what we could do to stop that.
You and me both.
I mean, I don't, I mean, the kids, there's two of us.
We sent, we, we'll, we'll investigate.
How tall is it? It's probably thirty feet tall.
Thank you, David.
Twenty-three feet. And what is it, eighty feet long or longer? How much?
About fifty feet.
Fifty feet. That's, that's humongous. That's big. That is, as big as a house.
Smaller than that.
Mayor, you're.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Ansaris.
Yeah, I was gonna point out, I'm just looking at, staff recommended denial in front of the Board of Adjustments. I don't know who, I don't, we weren't involved. We certainly can get the, we certainly can get the minutes for it. Uh, I'm assuming there's an audio tape. We can get the audio tape, and the council can provide that to council, and you can under, and you can review it and, and see where it is, address it. Um, that's your Board of Adjustment process that's established by the city code.
How do we stop this?
How do we stop it, yeah?
How do we, how do we stop the?
Resend the approval, or take them to court or something.
Well, I can, I'll look and I'll, and I will get back with you about it. It's, uh, and we can, we can certainly do that.
Thank you, please.
I mean, if I didn't, if I didn't caught this, the person that called me, we, we would be where we're at right now.
I get your points.
Yes, sir.
But the man used his appeal process that's in the ordinances, that the Board of Adjustment, they made the decision. I mean, he didn't do anything wrong. He's following what we put in place, the council put in place. I, I just, and staff recommended denial because we didn't think it, what this council's directed in the past. So, I just, you know, want to make sure you understand that, you know, we did our job, and he did.
Not blaming you.
Okay, I, I kind of felt like you were.
No, not, no, sir.
Okay, thank you.
If I, if I inferred that you.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
I just thought you and I had a discussion, and.
And we did.
You, and you had kind of inferred to me that it's gonna have to go through a court.
If the Board of Adjustments denied it, it would have to go to court. He could, his next appeal is to court, not to the city council.
Okay.
Versus an approval at the Board of Adjustments. He followed the appeals process that's in place.
Mr. Ansaris is gonna check into that, so.
Okay.
Expeditiously?
Sure. What, what's the address of that property?
It's Maryland Avenue, and I think, well, it would be Ninth Street.
That's correct.
So, that, the house there is less than fourteen hundred square feet?
The house is.
Are you asking a question or saying?
It's a two-story house.
I'm not asking, I'm telling you.
It's an old.
Yeah, so it should be seven hundred square feet.
It's under fourteen hundred square feet.
Yeah.
Okay.
Don't we have a limitation on the amount of impervious area per lot, too?
Well, there's two points to that. There, you know, that, that may be an issue that comes up during the permitting process. So, the, the Board of Adjustment doesn't address those issues related to permitting. All the Board of Adjustment was doing here was dealing with the proposed size of the structure. Whether it meets other city codes is beyond the scope of their review.
Okay. So, Dan, before we would get a permit through that process of getting the permit, can we make sure that, dot all the i's and?
That's what staff does, that's what staff does on every application, is to make sure that the, the applicant meets all this required city codes. That's what they do on a regular basis, so they would certainly do that with this project also.
Go through the. Go through the judge, do we, can we do that, or where we at?
I, as I already said, I would, I would look at.
You go for that, okay.
It's a very unusual situation for, for a city council to file an appeal of a decision by one of its appointed boards like this. So, I'd have to, and so, in my experience, we've never done that, so we would, I'd have to look at and report it back to you.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, I'm still here, so, um, Bill, can you tell me about Massachusetts Avenue, the, the home, the vacant house that they're, the city owned? The, uh, was that the two-story house?
Yes, so we, we raised the rent to twelve fifty. We had a list of, um, five employees that were on that waiting list, and all but one's turned it down. They said that's too expensive.
Okay.
And so, the, the intent of those was to allow employees that made less salary to rent those places. And so, now we've got employees that, you know, think it was too expensive, so.
Okay, can we put it in, MLS and just go ahead and list it then?
No.
I mean, we need to get it rented.
We, we don't have an ability to post it on MLS. You certainly can run it ahead.
I thought the direction at the last meeting was, if you can't rent it to an employee, or police, or fire, or whatever, and you were gonna rent it to a non-employee, then raise the rent. I thought was what our direction was.
I don't know, it was gonna raise the rent.
No, I thought it was like, if we couldn't rent it, and it was going out, because.
I mean, we were giving it less than half price.
Cause when we said we were going out, I said, well, if you're gonna go out to the outside, you need to raise the rent. So, I would rather rent it to a, a city employee.
Okay.
At a lower rent, personally. I don't know how the others feel.
Well, not for half price at five hundred dollars, that's too cheap.
Five hundred, was it?
Yeah, it's five hundred.
Five hundred, it's way too cheap, I can tell you.
You know, some of our lines workers are renting it, some of our law enforcement officers.
All right, and you're.
Eight hundred a month?
And last thing, we're still in line for Pennsylvania Avenue to get.
It's.
When, when the bids are gonna come out? Just give me a, give me a doc.
It's in design, correct?
Drop dead date that it's gonna be.
It's in, it's, Ocelle Engineers is doing the design work on it, right? Engineering and design work right now.
And you don't know when.
We have to have the contract signed for construction by July first to get the state money that we, was allocated by legislature.
Okay.
So, I'm anticipating in that timeframe, April, May, June, in that timeframe, depending on what the plans and putting the bid out.
Put in a half a year before you ever get started, then.
Yep.
Councilman As, you would like to ask the question?
Mr. Cooper, would it be, um, so if you're saying twelve hundred, what about if we said eight hundred dollars a month? Meet kind of in the middle someplace, and see if we can send it back out. I would personally rather have staff renting it out as well. Would that be an easy compromise? And if down the road, we need to raise it up some more, we can do that.
Put it nine hundred, and I'll, I'll go with you.
I'm good with eight hundred.
Thank you. Okay.
I'm good with eight hundred, and I.
Yes.
Thank you. I just, I just encourage you to look for someone who has a genuine economic need, not just someone, the first person who signs up for it.
Okay. We'll go back through the list.
Mr. Cooper?
Let me see here. All right, I'll let you go. That's it.
Thank you.
Oh, what, 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 I'm, I'm.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. Excuse me. Has everybody, all the council members have seen the drawdown, what's going on, coming up? Everybody got a copy of it?
Mm-hmm.
Have you seen it? And they're still on, on point for that?
Yes, sir. That's correct. It should be starting to draw down the nineteenth, I believe, the date. And probably even first of the new year is when we'll do the spray and burn, and.
Okay, and I'd ask you the last, you and I had talked about, the last thing is down there at the, in the fence there of the sewage treatment plant, in back of the fence to the north side, towards the lake. There's big trees that need to be cut down, and we've got almost two acres there. It could be physically used for a park or something, what you're talking about, right there. There's almost two, almost two acres out there going to the lake. That's what I've heard, anyway. Could we kind of look at that and see about getting that cut, knocked down, so we could, along with what's gonna be burned and mowed?
A, a, and we did discuss that today and asked Mr. Cooper to bring that to council, if they want me to use the resources and spend the money to clean up that area. Down by the reclaim booster station by the clinic, if you look on the other side of the fence, it's overgrown and stuff, and I, I think Mr. Cooper would like us to see if we could look at cleaning that all up.
Is it our property or lake?
Oh, that's, we've got all that.
City property.
We've got all, all of that down there. There's, there's almost two acres there that they could have picnics and parks right out there. Comes around.
If you're looking at the cost, yeah. I mean, if, and we can make a decision then, right? We got a couple of months.
Well, I think you could probably.
We're only gonna get one shot at the drawdown, right?
Could we put a, a bid out for somebody to, I don't care who it is, anybody to give a bid that could clean that, that acreage out right there in front of the fencing that's there, where the.
That'd be a good way to find out what you had cost, I mean.
We could see, put out bid for that and see what, get it cleaned up.
And that's, if that's a part of the federal permit that they did, I, they had designated areas that could be cleared and burned.
And it comes right up to that.
I, yeah, I just didn't know if that was part of it from.
It comes up to that, just about up to that, and then the rest of it would be ours. So, we could get that cleaned out, knocked down at the same time. You'd have some.
I mean, it's one of those.
Facilities there.
Yeah, we get one opportunity to do this, right? They're not gonna do a drawdown.
This is the time to do it.
Ten, fifteen years, so.
Yeah.
So, there's no access from the lake, from Lake Shore?
Yes, you can walk right around there.
So, why is it our one opportunity?
Actually, we've got a fence right up there now. You could take part of that fence down, and you could, hey, utilize a part of that where the sewage treatment plant used to be there.
On the Lakewood Edge, right? Is that where you're, you're saying is on the lake, lakeside?
Yes, on the lakeside.
Yeah, okay.
Where that, that fence goes around, and that used to be a part of the septic tank right there. Take part of that out and clean that, in back of it, towards the lake.
If you guys can map it out and kind of bring it up in another date tour, we can all be on the same page.
We good? I'll, I'll bring that back with a plan and.
Yes.
Take a look at.
Put that in the next meeting? Do you handle that? Not a big deal?
He'll do it. Do it when you can, okay?
Or when, soon as you can.
Give me thirty days, please, 'cause I need to look at it.
I gotta.
Yeah, you got the holiday coming anyway.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm done. Thank you.
Sure. Are you sure?
Uh.
No, let's move on.
You want me another half an hour?
Councilmember Askew.
Um, thank you, Mayor. I'll pass.
Councilmember Trace.
Thank you, everyone, for staying, and, uh, see everyone on Saturday at Pinktober Pass.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. The council, the truck pull team.
Dan? Uh, I have a thank you note. It says, Dear Mayor and City Council, thank you so much for your contribution for our students in Osceola County. We're grateful for, uh, the city of St. Cloud and your, and for our scholarships. With best regards, Kathy Pearson, who's a board member of the Education Foundation. The last thing that I have is, uh, the landscaping coming into City Hall is getting really, really bad. And I would just would like to see some.
It went out to bid on the twenty-ninth of September.
I just really feel like coming into City Hall ought to be a showpiece.
Yes, sir.
And maintain incredibly well.
Redoing all of it.
With that, I don't have anything else. Brings us to our Information Section, Report Section. Thursday, October the twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen, City Council's special session at five-thirty PM at City Hall in the Growth Management Conference Room. Thursday, October the twenty-fourth, there will be a City Council meeting at six-thirty PM at City Hall Council Chambers. We, uh, issued a proclamation, recognition of fire prevention week before our council meeting began tonight, and, uh, we also have, uh, reports to remind you of. A Recreation Advisory Committee meeting, uh, minutes for August have been approved. And then, you also have for your review, the warrant list number nineteen. With that, we'll call this meeting adjourned.
Same time.